Yeah. Yep. That's what I'm trying to do.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
They're in the chair for the law. Yeah, that was, uh...
Yeah. Is she doing it?
She's supporting. She's... She's a captain engineer. So, she's been there since the day they started turning it apart.
Yeah, that's it. She's been here since I've been here.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation led by our Oklahoma City Police Department Pastor Ted Inman, and that'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Jane Green of Scouting 6201 and Connor Joseph of Scouting Troop 4. Please stand as you are able.
All right, let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we're thankful for so many things. We're thankful that you sent your son so that we could have eternal life. We're thankful for our city, and these are leaders. I pray today and every day that you'd give them the wisdom that they need for the decisions they make that affect all of us. Would you continue to have your hand of blessing upon this city? And we'll give you the praise for everything that you'll do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Pastor Inman. Thank you, Jane and Connor. Well, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we'll begin with office of the mayor. And we'll begin with item 3A, a resolution honoring the legacy of MAPS 3. So, many of you are here for that, and I am so grateful that you are. Today, we wanted to provide a fitting coda to this really seventeen-year odyssey of creating, passing, and ultimately implementing this amazing initiative. I was Mayor Cornet's Chief of Staff, and Mayor Cornet is here. And it was seventeen years ago, in January of 2007, that he first presented to the people of Oklahoma City in his State of the City address the idea that we might do this. It was not presumed in 2007 that we would continue the MAPS story. That was not necessarily baked in. We created a website, and actually, the first question was, should we do MAPS 3? That was the first question that we wanted to solicit an answer from the public. And the second question, of course, is what you would want to have in it. And that lasted, that whole conversation, obviously went on for a couple of years into the proposal that was adopted by council, put to the voters. We have representatives from the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce here today because they led that charge, and you'll hear about that in the resolution. And then, of course, once it was passed by not an overwhelming margin, you know? That was a hard-fought campaign. And... But it allowed us to have another transformative initiative for our city and to continue this now legendary MAPS story. That baton was then passed to a citizen advisory board led by Tom McDaniel, who we'll hear from in a few moments, and a staff first led by Eric Winger and then by David Todd, and you'll hear about them in the resolution as well. But we're so grateful for all of you coming today. As you know, a few weeks ago, Councilman Hinkle and others were there. We opened the final standalone project of MAPS 3. And Tom McDaniel and I have been talking over the last few months, really years, about when do we sort of wind this down? And this felt like the right time. There will be some remaining small tasks, as you'll hear in the resolution, which does handle a little bit of business. We will pass that on to MAPS 4. And I believe we also have Teresa Rose here from MAPS 4, wearing two hats. She's also the chairwoman of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber. But it is time to kind of salute MAPS 3 and move in fully to MAPS 4. But we wanted to take a moment to honor that history and that legacy. So, I am going to ask the clerk to read a resolution. This is probably the... This may be the longest resolution ever read at City Hall, but we had a lot to say. So, in breaking with... Longtime viewers of council meetings know that I would have already headed down to the front for this presentation, but because of the length of this, I'm going to stay here while she reads the resolution, and then towards the end, I'll make my way down to the front. It is about fifteen minutes, but I would ask you to really listen. And like, you know, each of these clauses has a point, you know? And... And... Why is James laughing at that? Is that what you think every time you're about to give a speech? Listen to me. Every one of these points is a point. So, there's, you know, there's names that needed to be said. There's entities and groups that needed to be recognized, and it tells a story. So, I wish there was some visual. You can just close your eyes and imagine the projects if you want while Amy reads this. But it is, I think, a fitting memorial, if that's the right word, to this initiative as it comes to a close. So, I would ask the clerk to please read this resolution.
Resolution honoring the legacy of MAPS 3, expressing gratitude to the members of the Citizens Advisory Board and its subcommittees, dissolving the board and subcommittees, and transitioning any remaining tasks. Whereas, the Oklahoma City Metropolitan Area Projects MAPS Initiative has a storied history of transformative projects that have enhanced Oklahoma City's quality of life and sparked a renaissance that is known around the world. And whereas, the MAPS Initiative originated in Oklahoma City in 1993 with the successful passage and eventual implementation of MAPS 1, a groundbreaking program that dramatically improved the city's quality of life, revitalized the city's downtown area, and established a culture of public investment that endures to this day. And whereas, building upon the success of MAPS 1, Oklahoma City continued its commitment to progress with the approval of MAPS for Kids in 2001, focusing on improving public education infrastructure in Oklahoma City Public Schools and throughout the city. And whereas, the culmination of these efforts led to the development of MAPS 3, which was approved by 54.3% of the voters on December 8, 2009. And whereas, MAPS 3 originally envisioned with a budget of $777 million, and the MAPS 3 tax collection would last from April 2010 to December 2017. And whereas, the foresight and leadership of Mayor Mick Cornet alongside the City Council members who supported MAPS 3, including Gary Mars, Sam Bowman, Pete White, Larry McAtee, Meg Salyer, Skip Kelly, and Pat Ryan, were instrumental in advancing this initiative. And whereas, the support of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce was crucial in the passage of the MAPS 3 Initiative in 2009, with such efforts being led by Chairman David Thompson and President and CEO Roy Williams and their board and staff. And whereas, the dedication and expertise of the MAPS 3 Citizens Advisory Board and its subcommittee members have been invaluable in guiding the planning, implementation, and oversight of the various projects throughout their development. And whereas, the MAPS 3 Citizens Advisory Board was seated in 2010 and consisted through the years of Chair Tom McDaniel, Dee Morales, Susan J. Hooper, Michael Dover, Kimberly Lowe, Zane Boatwright, Michael G. Adams, Nathaniel Harding, Wayne Williams, Gloria Griffin, Cecilia Robinson Woods, Rusty La Forge, and Bob Nealon. And whereas, Tom McDaniel, as Chair of MAPS 3, has demonstrated exemplary leadership, vision, and selfless dedication, and deserves unique recognition and lasting tribute to his legacy in our city. And whereas, the exceptional contributions of city managers Jim Couch and Craig Freeman, MAPS Directors Eric Winger and David Todd, and dozen of city staffers and outside consultants have played a critical role in the successful implementation of MAPS 3 projects. And whereas, the MAPS 3 program consisted of eight transformative projects aimed at enhancing Oklahoma City's quality of life. And whereas, Scissor Tail Park comprising both Upper Park Open 2019 and Lower Park Open 2022 has become a centerpiece of Oklahoma City's downtown, providing residents and visitors with expansive green space and recreational opportunities. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Kimberly Lowe, Chair, Michael Dover, Vice Chair, Bill Cameron, Kerry Watkins, Anthony McDermid, Teresa Rose, Miles Tolbert, Desmond Mason, Fred Hall, Rusty La Forge, Maureen Hefferman, Jane Giraud-Gamble, Jay Michelle Martin-Coine, and Debbie Bocar. And whereas, the Oklahoma City Convention Center opened in 2021, has become a premier venue for conventions, conferences, and events, contributing to the city's economic growth and vitality. And we extend our gratitude to subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Tom McDaniel, Chair, Susan J. Hooper, Vice Chair, Mike Carrier, Larry Nichols, Russell Perry, Avis Scaramucci, John Williams, Roy Williams, Gary Mars, and Mayor Kirk Humphries. And whereas, the OKC Streetcar completed in 2018 has transformed transportation in downtown Oklahoma City, providing residents and visitors with a convenient and sustainable mode of circulation through our downtown. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Nathaniel Harding, Chair, Zane Boatwright, Vice Chair, Stan Hubfeld, Debbie Blackburn, Jeff Bezdek, A.J. Winters III, Jane Jenkins, Stephen Mason, Jill Adler, Cliff Hudson, David Remy, and Mark Gibbs. And whereas, the Senior Health and Wellness Centers, including Number One, completed 2017, Number Two completed 2018, Number Three completed 2023, and Number Four completed 2024, have improved access to health and wellness services for seniors across the city. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Michael Dover, Chair, Cecilia Robinson Woods, Vice Chair, Blair Schob, Mike Grady, Valerie Thompson, Sam Bowman, Kenyon Morgan, Terry Watkins, Larry Weatherford, Wayne Williams, Gloria Griffin, Alice Messer, Connie Baker, Pat Fennell, and Zora Brown. And whereas, the Trails, including West River Trail, completed 2015, Will Rogers Trail, completed 2018, and Draper Trail, completed 2019, have expanded recreational opportunities and connectivity throughout Oklahoma City's trail system. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Susan Hooper, Chair, Zane Boatwright, Vice Chair, Georgie Rasko, Hal McKnight, T. Scott Buxton, Brent Gaddis, Joshua Harlow, Russell Pace, and Pam Henry. And whereas, the Sidewalks Project, an ongoing effort, has enhanced pedestrian safety and accessibility across Oklahoma City, promoting active lifestyles and community engagement. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Susan Hooper, Chair, Zane Boatwright, Vice Chair, Stan Hubfeld, Debbie Blackburn, Jeff Bezdek, A.J. Winters III, Jane Jenkins, Stephen Mason, Jill Adler, Cliff Hudson, David Remy, and Mark Gibbs. And whereas, the Senior Health and Wellness Centers, including Number One, completed 2017, Number Two completed 2018, Number Three completed 2023, and Number Four completed 2024, have improved access to health and wellness services for seniors across the city. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Michael Dover, Chair, Cecilia Robinson Woods, Vice Chair, Blair Schob, Mike Grady, Valerie Thompson, Sam Bowman, Kenyon Morgan, Kerry Watkins, Larry Weatherford, Wayne Williams, Gloria Griffin, Alice Messer, Connie Baker, Pat Fennell, and Zora Brown. And whereas, the Trails, including West River Trail, completed 2015, Will Rogers Trail, completed 2018, and Draper Trail, completed 2019, have expanded recreational opportunities and connectivity throughout Oklahoma City's trail system. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Nathaniel Harding, Chair, Zane Boatwright, Vice Chair, Stan Hubfeld, Debbie Blackburn, Jeff Bezdek, A.J. Winters III, Jane Jenkins, Stephen Mason, Jill Adler, Cliff Hudson, David Remy, and Mark Gibbs. And whereas, the Senior Health and Wellness Centers, including Number One, completed 2017, Number Two completed 2018, Number Three completed 2023, and Number Four completed 2024, have improved access to health and wellness services for seniors across the city. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Michael Dover, Chair, Cecilia Robinson Woods, Vice Chair, Blair Schob, Mike Grady, Valerie Thompson, Sam Bowman, Kenyon Morgan, Kerry Watkins, Larry Weatherford, Wayne Williams, Gloria Griffin, Alice Messer, Connie Baker, Pat Fennell, and Zora Brown. And whereas, the Trails, including West River Trail, completed 2015, Will Rogers Trail, completed 2018, and Draper Trail, completed 2019, have expanded recreational opportunities and connectivity throughout Oklahoma City's trail system. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Susan Hooper, Chair, Zane Boatwright, Vice Chair, Georgie Rasko, Hal McKnight, T. Scott Buxton, Brent Gaddis, Joshua Harlow, Russell Pace, and Pam Henry. And whereas, the Sidewalks Project, an ongoing effort, has enhanced pedestrian safety and accessibility across Oklahoma City, promoting active lifestyles and community engagement. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Susan Hooper, Chair, Zane Boatwright, Vice Chair, Russell Pace, Georgie Rasko, Hal McKnight, T. Scott Buxton, Brent Gaddis, Joshua Harlow, and Pam Henry. And whereas, Riversport Rapids, completed in 2016, has established Oklahoma City as a premier destination for whitewater rafting and outdoor adventure. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Dee Morales, Chair, Michael Adams, Vice Chair, Mike Knopp, Martha Berger, Alan Markham, Chris Reen, Juliana Dilligans, Brian Doherty, Joseph Klytus, Gina Timberman, and Mayor Ronald J. Norick. And whereas, the Bennett Events Center at the OKC Fairgrounds, completed in 2017, has provided a state-of-the-art venue for exhibitions, trade shows, and events, further bolstering Oklahoma City's reputation as a vibrant and dynamic city. And we extend our gratitude to the subcommittee members who diligently worked on this project. And those subcommittee members included Bob Nealon, Chair, preceded by Rusty La Forge, Dee Morales, Vice Chair, Tim O'Toole, Jay Blake Wade, Mike Turpin, Chris Turner, Eric Roberts, Madeline Mitchell, Sean Clark, Ann Simink, and Bud Marshall Jr. And whereas, MAPS 3 opened in its last major standalone project in May 2024. And in recognition of the conclusion of MAPS 3, it is fitting to dissolve the MAPS 3 Citizens Advisory Board and its subcommittees, acknowledging their dedicated service and contributions to the community. And whereas, the transition of any remaining tasks and responsibilities that may arise related to the MAPS 3 Initiative shall be delegated to the MAPS 4 Citizens Advisory Board, ensuring continuity and continued progress in meeting the evolving needs of the Oklahoma City community. And these potential remaining tasks and responsibilities include, but are not limited to, any actions necessary to complete projects that have already opened, the completion of the Union Station Project within Scissor Tail Park, the completion of the MAPS 4 State Fair Coliseum that MAPS 3 contributed resources toward, and the spending of any remaining funds. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City hereby, one, expresses its profound gratitude to all individuals involved in the planning, implementation, and oversight of MAPS 3 projects for their unwavering dedication and commitment to enhancing the city's future. And two, recognizes Mayor Mick Cornet and the council members who developed and supported MAPS 3 in 2009 for their visionary leadership and foresight in championing initiatives that have positively impacted the community. And three, expresses gratitude to the voters and taxpayers of Oklahoma City for their trust and commitment. And four, commends the MAPS 3 Citizens Advisory Board, including Chairman Tom McDaniel, Dee Morales, Susan J. Hooper, Michael Dover, Kimberly Lowe, Zane Boatwright, Michael G. Adams, Nathaniel Harding, Wayne Williams, Gloria Griffin, Cecilia Robinson Woods, Rusty La Forge, and Bob Nealon, as well as the aforementioned subcommittee members for their tireless efforts and invaluable contributions towards the successful completion of MAPS 3 projects. And five, acknowledges and applauds Jim Couch, Craig Freeman, Eric Winger, David Todd, and the collective city staff team for their exceptional leadership and dedication in bringing the vision of MAPS 3 to fruition. And six, acknowledges and thanks all the operating partners, architects, and engineers who took the MAPS 3 projects from vision to reality. And seven, honors Tom McDaniel as the fourteen-year Chair of MAPS 3 for his exemplary leadership and vision with a lasting tribute to be named in his honor, symbolizing his enduring legacy within the MAPS Initiative, and directs that the lake at Scissor Tail Park be named Lake Tom McDaniel, with appropriate future usages to also include Lake McDaniel, with appropriate signage designating it as such, including explanatory text that communicates Tom McDaniel's civic role in MAPS 3 to be installed at the lake as soon as practical. And eight, celebrates the completion and opening of each MAPS 3 project as significant milestones in Oklahoma City's continued growth and development, enriching the lives of its residents and visitors alike. And nine, dissolves the MAPS 3 Citizens Advisory Board and its subcommittees with heartfelt appreciation for their dedicated service and commitment to advancing the goals of the MAPS Initiative. And ten, transitions any remaining tasks and responsibilities that may arise related to the MAPS 3 Initiative to the MAPS 4 Citizens Advisory Board, ensuring the continued progress and success of future projects aimed at enhancing the Oklahoma City community, and reaffirms the longstanding commitment that any remaining MAPS 3 funds shall be expended only on MAPS 3 projects as defined in the original resolution passed by City Council in 2009. And eleven, binds that items one through eight of this resolution are effective immediately, and items nine through 10 are effective July 1, 2024. Adopted by the City Council and signed by the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City this 18th day of June 2024.
Thank you. Yeah, let's hear it for Amy. And let's hear it for everybody. Now, we're not quite done yet. Now, if Tom would come forward, and Mayor Cornet, if you wouldn't mind, and if there's any citizen advisory board members here. I know there's a few that were from MAPS 3 Citizen Advisory Board. I see, here's Nathaniel. I saw Dee.
Here's Zane, Bob, Michael Adams, Sue.
Yeah.
Sue Hooper came from Florida.
Wow, that's awesome. Yes, well, then, please.
Dee Morales.
Yes. Yeah, okay. They all sat together. Very good. Come on up. Yeah. Please, come forward. Well, there would be hardly much more to say after all of that, but we do want to say a few things and give some folks a chance to say something. I would note, certainly, obviously, Mayor Cornet's vision here was very critical, and it was not coincidental that the street that we worked to name for him is in the middle of kind of the MAPS 3 legacy. And so, we have sort of already done that. But it certainly was a major recognition of his whole body of service, but also very much his leadership of MAPS 3. And that street, of course, is in between the convention center and the park and the Omni, and is the address of the convention center. And by the way, I mean, like, that stuff doesn't just happen. David Todd had to talk to the postal service to make sure that that was all set up. But with that in mind, I think we'd love to hear... I am springing this on Mayor Cornet a little bit, but, you know, he's been at this a long time. I think we'd love to hear from him, and then, of course, we'd love to hear from Tom. And then, if there's anything any council members want to say, I'll turn around and look to catch your eye. But Mayor Cornet, welcome back, by the way. I don't know if you've been here lately, so... I bet you don't miss this, do you? Most days, I do not miss it. Some days, I do. This is one of those days when I do, because I've got to see so many smiling faces and people that reminded me of really enjoyable times in my professional career and advancement. So, I love my time at City Hall here. I think, first of all, we need to thank, as the mayor and council already have, by passing the resolution, all of those who worked on this. You know, mayors get way too much credit for these MAPS proposals because it takes so many people to build this legacy. And I'll... I obviously won't mention everybody, but I do want to mention Jim Couch. I think history should reflect that he came in and kind of righted the ship in the 90s for the original MAPS, helped get MAPS for Kids going. And then, by the time we got to MAPS 3, it kind of felt like, from a City Hall perspective, we kind of had a well-oiled machine. Now, even well-oiled machines break down sometimes, but it kind of felt like we had a system in place with the right amount of citizen oversight and City Hall staff in place that we could pull it off probably as cleanly as any city in America. And I think that was proven to be true. And I also want to thank, because I know that former mayors should be seen and not heard, I want to thank the current mayor and council because, you know, when you leave office, you know, there's no guarantee that anything you started is going to be continued. And all you have to do is talk to mayors from around the country who... whose visions were not carried out. And so, I don't want this council to know how much I appreciate the fact that they have delivered the vision as the citizens voted upon and the citizen advisory board oversaw, and our original council led. So, it all has worked, and I couldn't pick a favorite project. I think I'm proud of all of them. And it is wonderful to see the demographic results that I think have fulfilled the MAPS vision from 1993 all the way up to 2024. And so, to that, I'm appreciative, and I hope everyone here shares in that pride. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to you or to him?
Ah, me. I'll take it.
Thank you, Mayor Cornet. I'm going to kind of build towards Tom, I think. So, now, I'd like to see, is there anybody... Just, it's okay if... I see you reaching for a mic. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. I was talking to Mr. McDaniel before the meeting started. And, you know, just really, we were kind of talking about how great everything in MAPS 3 went and how proud our citizens are of the MAPS program. And really, the deciding factor on that is it becomes the impetus for MAPS 4, right? When you see how well MAPS 3 was completed, and you look at the vote margin we had in MAPS 4, it just... It really kind of demonstrates the great job that each and every one of y'all did overseeing these programs. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody? Mark?
Yes, please. At this time, I would like to recognize Brenda McDaniel. And I'd ask her to stand, and let's give her a big round of applause. There is a wonderful article that you can Google about their marriage. They've been married 64 years, and they have a secret. The secret to a long and happy marriage is to keep working and to center your life around family and faith. And at every ribbon-cutting, every groundbreaking, Brenda was always there when I was there, and she meant a lot to the project, and I think she should be recognized today. Second, I want to recognize Mick Cornet, Jim Couch, David Todd, Eric Winger, and Bob Nealon, who's from my ward, who served on the MAPS 3 Advisory Board Committee. Can we give them a big hand? I want to thank Bob. Every time I've ever called Bob Nealon, he's always willing to serve and to help. And he was, some people say, crazy enough, to agree to serve on the advisory board number four. So, he is now Ward Eight, representative for MAPS 4, and we appreciate all your hard work. Last, I'd like to thank Amy for surviving, reading that long resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and adopt that resolution? Why don't we go ahead and adopt that resolution before we get to Tom? So, this is, in fact, a resolution, so we need a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. All right, passes unanimously. Well, Mr. McDaniel, I think at times you might have thought over this last 14 years of service that it was a lifetime appointment, but we have just, I think, finally established that you are going to have life after MAPS III. Obviously, we tried to put into words, into the resolution, how much your service, as well as that of your colleagues here on the Citizens Advisory Board, has meant to us. And I thought for a couple of years about how best to honor that, and the council was obviously unanimously in support of that naming, and we're just so incredibly grateful. And it's worth noting, I mean, this isn't like the only thing you've ever done for Oklahoma City. I mean, you've served as President of OCU, you've served, obviously, in so many other capacities, professionally and civically, that have meant a lot to this community. So, I think it's a fitting tribute on many levels. And we would love to finish our honoring of MAPS III this morning with a few words from you. And maybe we'll begin that with one more applause of gratitude to Tom McDaniel.
I didn't realize this was going to be so hard. While the rest of you were thinking that that was a very long resolution, I was kind of hanging on every word, because it was an effort by many, and as they read every name of every Subcommittee and every project that we did, while it might have seemed laborious to you guys, to me, it just brought back memories rushing back. And whatever time I have to give up to do this, I do want to say thank you to Dee and to Sue. Sue flew in from Florida. She's a retired principal in Oklahoma City, and she and her husband moved to Florida, and she flew back for this. Kimberly Lowe and Zane Holbrook. Nathaniel Harding, who we had to hang on to, he did a tour in Afghanistan during his term on this board. Michael Adams, Bob Nealon. I just say to you that it's been a memorable road for all of us, and I...
I was hiding back there, by the way.
Oh, I didn't see. Michael Dover, yeah. Michael Dover, I couldn't see for Nathaniel. All right. I guess I'll start with this personal note. I can't begin to tell you what it means to me and to Brenda and to our family to have the mayor and the city council give us this recognition that will connect our name to MAPS III for time to come. And that means a lot to us, and we're very proud and very honored that you were nice enough to do that for us. Then, I want to say on behalf of my colleagues here and the more than 80 volunteers who served on subcommittees, all of whom were named, it definitely has been a labor of love. I think that in each and every way, we're proud to have been a part of this, what I believe is a transformational and historic endeavor for our community that has transformed it for generations to come. So, we're all very proud to have been a part of it. My mind rushed back to a Tuesday in May 2010, when we were sitting, more or less where we're sitting today, and we walked into this room to get our instructions and to take an oath. The council had named someone from each of the eight wards, and Dee Morales and I were the at-large appointees. And we were strangers. For the most part, we didn't know each other. And the council was seeking diversity and a representation of all the city, from all corners of our city, and we got that. We got a diverse group of people who had different life experiences, different backgrounds, different skills, different opinions. And while I don't expect you'll want to do it after listening to the resolution, I would suggest that if you went back and read the minutes of the hundreds of meetings that we've had over these past 14 years, you would see that people expressed a lot of different opinions, that people had spirited discussions, that we had some very close votes on some key issues. But more than anything, I'm proud that we were unified throughout on our primary goal to deliver to the people of Oklahoma City what they bargained for when they voted on these MAPS III projects, and we were able to overcome those differences and incorporate those differences to make things better. We never fractured, and we stayed the course, and I'm very proud of that, and I salute my colleagues for that effort. I just say, I just have to say that we had a lot of help. It's already been said that we had two of the greatest mayors in the history of Oklahoma City in Mick Cornet, who started, and David, who has brought us home. We also had two of the great city managers in Jim Couch and Craig Freeman, who have provided all the support we needed. We had some fantastic people guiding us, our consultant from ADG, and Mike Mize, who led the effort for them, spearheaded their effort for 12 years or more, that guided our efforts every day. And then, of course, where the rubber met the road, Eric Winger got us off to a great start, made sure we didn't trip ourselves up right off the bat, and he handed the ball to my friend, David Todd, who has spent more than a decade with us, every day, every month, with his great staff, making sure that these projects were brought home. And David, you have my personal thanks for all you did to help us. And his whole staff was terrific. I'm going to mention Mark Beck and Lisa and Carrie particularly, who came to every gosh-dang meeting we had, and made sure that we had the minutes of the meeting to make sure they took their roles, to make sure that everything went as it should go. And I'll just say that we had even more help than that from the rest of staff, with a lot of engineers, a lot of people that are doing a lot of things, the people that did the construction. We were able to attract the very best engineers and architects from around the world because of the economic times. So, they were beautifully done. We had some great communicators, Kristi Jaeger and her staff, and Katie Gusterson, that did everything they could to make us look as good as we could, and it wasn't always easy. So, we appreciated their efforts. And I guess I want to, and yes, I'm going to close. I guess I want to end by saying that we may have started as strangers, but we come to the end of this process as very close-knit colleagues. We all share a wonderful sense of accomplishment, and we also all share optimism for the future of our city. And I think it's in that spirit that we'll bid you all farewell. So, many thanks to all, one and all. Thank you.
Let's show our appreciation. Thank you, Tom. So, I'm going to, we're going to, obviously, say a few goodbyes, a few handshakes. We're going to maybe pause here. If you want to leave now, because you were just here for MAPS III, that's perfectly reasonable, and maybe we'll give you a minute or two to do that before we proceed to our other business, which you are also welcome to stay for if you want, but don't feel obligated. Robert, you are the Employee of the Month, and we would like to learn a little bit more about you. And so, this resolution, however, is not 15 minutes long. It's going to be a little shorter, but nonetheless, very educational about the amazing work you're doing for our city, and I would ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas, Robert Montgomery has been a city employee for one year with the Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas, Robert Montgomery is a recreation leader at the Willa D. Johnson Recreation Center, managing part-time team members. And whereas, Robert Montgomery consistently goes beyond his role, demonstrating exceptional dedication, creativity, and strong commitment to both his own work and the work of his team. And whereas, Robert Montgomery's positive attitude translates perfectly into his exceptional customer service and willingness to support his colleagues, making him an invaluable member of his group. And whereas, Robert Montgomery regularly treats his coworkers to breakfast on Fridays, a simple act of kindness that brings his team together, boosts morale, and creates a positive culture in the workplace. And whereas, Robert Montgomery knows all of the patrons who come to the center during his work shift, and regularly receives feedback on his outstanding customer service, leadership, and team spirit. And whereas, this council desires to recognize Robert Montgomery for his dedication, compassion, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Robert Montgomery, June 2024, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Well, thank you. Well, Robert, one year on the job, and you're already the Employee of the Month. That's not bad. We're grateful to have you. Well, this is a resolution. Let's see if we can get a motion in a second, and then, we'd love to hear a few words from you. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. All right, Robert's kind of hanging by a thread here. All right, there we go. Passes unanimously. Well, congratulations, but most of all, thank you for the service you provide at Willa Johnson, which is obviously a pretty, a center as brand-new as your employment here, and we're very proud of it, and we're grateful that you're doing such a great job there, serving our residents. We'd love to hear a few words from you.
Well, I would like to say that if we take the example set before us over 2,000 years ago by somebody, if we learned to love, to forgive, and to serve, it makes wherever you are just an exceptional place to be. And I couldn't do it without Naisha, and Natasha, and Lisa, and Scott, and Melinda, excuse me. They've really fostered a place where everybody can grow and really be heard, and I really just appreciate everything that you all set before us, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Let's show our appreciation to Robert.
I just want to know what time breakfast is on Fridays. What time is breakfast, Mr. Robert, so I can show up? Oh, okay. I'll see you next Friday.
All right. And finally, on Office of the Mayor, we have appointments. We have items C, D, E, F, and G appointments to Board of Adjustment, Joint Insurance, MAPS IV Connectivity Subcommittee, and the Redevelopment Authority, and we could take those with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, now, on to item four, items from council. And we have two ordinances here to be introduced and referred to the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission for Recommendation. I believe they're related to each other. They are authored by council members Cooper and Hammond, and, oh, Cooper stepped out, so Councilwoman Hammond.
Yeah, I will just ask staff to talk through what the ordinance is and let you all have your time.
Good morning. Lisa Cronister, Assistant Planning Director, here to present to you our proposed updates to the Home Sharing Ordinance. This was a huge team effort, so I want to recognize my colleagues in planning, Municipal Counselor's Office, and Development Services for helping us create this ordinance. So, the current, just some background before we talk about the changes, the current regulations were adopted in 2019 and included amendments to both Chapters 13 and 59. Chapter 13 requires a license for all home shares and sets the grounds for revocation of that license. Chapter 59 defines home share as a use that does not exceed a 30-day stay. It also requires non-owner-occupied home shares or home shares located in historic preservation zoning districts to obtain a special exception from the Board of Adjustment. The special exception process includes public notice and a public hearing at the Board of Adjustment. Planning staff convened focus groups throughout 2023 with residents, home-sharing hosts, operators, Board of Adjustment members, and city staff to discuss concerns and ways to address them. Residents' concerns included noise, parking, parties, and events. They were also concerned about the loss of a sense of community due to the proliferation of home shares in their neighborhoods, as well as home shares that did not follow the established process for licensure and permits. Hosts and operators were concerned about personal safety related to the public disclosure of property addresses and contact information. They also felt strongly that unlicensed operators were responsible for most home-sharing complaints. Members of the Board of Adjustment asked for more specific regulations to help them make more consistent decisions across applications. City staff expressed the need for any recommended ordinance changes to be written in a way that could be easily interpreted and enforced. So, before we look at the specific proposed changes, I wanted to reiterate the existing ordinance provisions that would remain the same. All home shares would still be required to obtain a license. Non-owner-occupied home shares or home shares located in historic preservation zoning districts would still be required to obtain a special exception from the Board of Adjustment, and there would be no changes to licensing fees. The proposed home sharing ordinance updates are included as changes to Chapters 13 and 59. Chapter 13 includes changes that would impact all home shares, both owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied. These changes are adding a definition of primary residence and clarifying how applicants would provide that proof in their applications, setting a maximum occupancy limit between the hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. This would limit the number of bedrooms, this limit would be the number of bedrooms times two plus two additional occupants not to exceed 16, and clarifying that home-share licenses and permits do not invalidate restrictive covenants, deed restrictions, or lease agreements that restrict home sharing. Chapter 59 changes apply only to home shares that require a special exception, that is, non-owner-occupied home shares and home shares in historic preservation zoning districts. These changes include specifying a minimum stay of two nights, reducing the maximum term for home sharing SE from 10 years to five years, limiting the number of home-share special exceptions granted to not exceed 10% of the units within any given block, establishing an off-street parking requirement of one space for every four occupants, authorizing the Board of Adjustment to consider restrictive covenants, deed restrictions, and lease agreements, and clarifying the process for revocation. and clarifying the process for revocation of a special exception. There are several more steps in the adoption process for this ordinance, all of which will provide opportunities for public comment. So there will be several hearings at Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, and two more council hearings over the course of the next several months. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
I just have just one question. In the interim of us working through this process, how are we handling those that are brought forward by the Board of Adjustments? And I ask that specifically because I know of a neighborhood within northeast Oklahoma City that received notice about a home share wanting to plant within their neighborhood, and they're concerned about the potential of that happening. And I know that would be happening probably, if not this month, in July, but I have a feeling, I believe it's actually June. So it's caught in, if you will, limbo of trying to get through this process. So I am curious and concerned at the same time of how we work through the process as it currently is to get to the better of what we're trying to do.
So applications that have already been submitted, that are, that are, have been submitted, accepted, and are working through the process, they would continue under the existing regulations? The, there would still be the public hearing where folks could, could show up, folks could write in to voice their concerns, and the board always considers public comment in their decisions. But the rules wouldn't, wouldn't change until after it's adopted and effective.
Thank you. I guess my concern, if you will, is us not putting maybe a moratorium on this until we were able to actually work through it, instead of allowing these things to still continue and take place. Whereas, you know, some of our communities are still vulnerable, and we're trying to do something different, and we can't at this moment. So I think that's where my, my concern is with us going through this process. Not to say, you know, this isn't the best process, but, you know, just being able to have a way to, you know, intermittently stop what's happening to, to get to the better of what we're doing.
Is that, I mean, is that possible? How many do we typically have, like, sort of in the process?
I, I don't know how many are in the process. There's many, many applications every month. It's, if that is something council wishes to do, we can craft something.
Is it, are we able to just amend this introduction, or do we need to have a separate? I don't know if that's a question for Kenny. Since this is being referred to some other board, it seems like maybe it's a separate thing we need to do.
Yes, no, to do, a moratorium and put everything on hold. You would have to adopt an emergency ordinance establishing a moratorium like we did for the signs. Yeah, that's what it would take.
Well, maybe we can connect after this meeting and talk through what that might look like. Because I know this was something that we, a few of us were, had discussions about many months ago and sort of saw that it was on the agenda this week, so maybe hadn't really thought through what that might look like. So I think that is something that would be worth considering and maybe kind of talking through what, kind of what impact that has on what's currently going through the process. But I'll just say for my part, I really do appreciate staff's work on this. My primary interest in kind of helping sponsor this was particularly the, the density of permits that, one of the main complaints I hear from a lot of Ward 6 neighborhoods is sort of the density on a particular block of people having essentially bound on all sides by home shares and kind of losing neighborliness. So I'm, and I think even just from the conversation about affordable housing and housing crisis, that being able to be a little more thoughtful in the way that we permit these and sort of allow for the saturation of them can be a little more precise and help spread them out across different neighborhoods and hopefully across the city as well. So appreciate all y'all's work on this, because I know it was a long research process to figure out what, what this could look like and make, that all the i's were dotted and so on. So thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate it.
I'd like to add, and I'll have you know, I wanted to show you a PBS NewsHour segment, but I'm going to wait till the, this comes back, because it's about the housing crisis. And I think we all need to be on the same page about the housing crisis that not just the country, but very specifically the city is facing. So just a brief comment and then a question. You know, for those of you who know my backstory as a teacher, I took office in the aftermath of the historic teacher walkout in April of 18. A starting pay salary for a teacher who went to college after four years, $31,000 in Oklahoma City. 31 was the starting pay. And so we walked out and we received a $6,000 pay increase. So starting pay for someone with a bachelor's degree is now around $37,000. I happen to have two master's degrees, and so my pay was a little bit more at $42,000. The area median income we've learned is around $38,000 for Oklahoma City. That means that we have too many teachers who are unable to afford a one-bedroom rental right now in Oklahoma City, let alone move into homeownership. As I have stated up here previously, according to our city's own Affordable Housing Study, we have 19,400 Oklahomacitians in need of one-to-two-bedroom housing units, and we have 3,600. Those folk are your teachers, they're your mental health providers, they're your baristas, they're your servers, they are workers. They're not lazy layabouts. They are workers. They are our neighbors. And my grave concern is that if you have 19,400 Oklahomacitians, like teachers, who need a place to live, and we only have 3,600 of those one-to-two bedrooms available, and we have people who instead of taking an existing property, I'll just selfishly mention Ward 2, taking an existing property in Jefferson Park, or Paseo, or Putnam Heights, or Crown Heights, Helm Farm, taking one of those properties instead of restoring a home so that it's a rental for a teacher or a barista, taking it and restoring it so that it is a home share. And that's fine. I like to stay at home shares. I stay at home shares. I also stay at hotels. It's a little call in A and a little call in B. My worry is too many people are purchasing too many of a diminishing housing inventory and converting it just to home share. And that hurts our teachers. That hurts our students as well, who only 30% of our students are going on to college from OKCPS. That would be fine, because not everyone needs to go to college, if they were going to career tech. Most of them are not. And when you don't have a certificate or a degree, it makes it harder to pay the rent. It makes it harder to move into homeownership. So I am, my priority forever and always will be students and teachers, because that's all of us ultimately. We are the result of education. So I need to make sure that my kids and the people tasked with their education have a solid roof over their head. And right now, too many home shares on blocks, whole blocks, are a reality. And I don't think that's right. I do not think that's right. I don't think that's right. So that's part of my impetus. In addition to every reason you heard from Lisa, I've received so many emails and phone calls through the years. Now, some of them, I think, are misplaced fears. Some of them, I think, are people who are like, if we have home shares, everyone's throwing a party in them. No, they're not. No, they're not. Or, we don't know the strangers who come. Well, you don't know the strangers who own a home in your neighborhood either, who we know from John Wayne Gacy to Ted Bundy. We're homeowners, homeowners, middle-class homeowners. So don't come to me about renters being scary. I have been a proud renter all of my life, and I am a teacher and a city councilman, okay? So just because you're a renter doesn't make you scary. Just because you're working class and poor doesn't make you scary. We got to stop those ideas. We got to stop those ideas. That's wild. So I'm just laying it all out here on the table today, because I, I need to address this issue with you, but I'm also wanting to address some of these misconceptions that are out there. So, too many of these, and the thing I'm the most excited about is the reduction by block, restricting the level of density of them. My question, and thank you for hearing those concerns. My question is, I think, you know, I have really good residents in Ward 2 who are home share operators, like good residents, thoughtful, some of them who are property owners who rent at reasonable rent, and people who take care of their home shares. I don't want this approach to be punitive to them. The people I am the most concerned about are, in fact, the people who are not just gobbling up the properties like Pac-Man, but the people who are operating unlicensed. And as you know, we have a shortage of code enforcement. Workers are ready. I, during the budget presentations, requested a thoughtful examination of how we could be more intentional about that recruitment and retaining of code enforcement people. But I understand that we have the potential to work with a private firm, a consulting company, who could actually work to identify unlicensed home share by comparing that in a Venn diagram overlap of who's got these properties listed as home share. I won't feel comfortable, I know I'm proposing this alongside councillor Hammond and city staff, but I won't feel entirely comfortable about its final passage until we address the unlicensed folk. I do not want this to be punishing the, the good folk out there. This has to be about accountability and my teachers and my students. So where are we at that, with that particular unlicensed part?
Yeah, I, I believe City Manager's Office is looking at that service.
And that's, that's what really we feel is a part, an important part. We're still exploring that, but we feel like that's an important part of this next step, making these improvements in the ordinance and then looking at what we're doing on enforcement, because it's so difficult to identify those and having a service that can help us with that. So we're exploring that and working on that right now.
So that's happening alongside this component?
Yes, yes.
Great. And it's very important for me to communicate to, this is very important for me to communicate to those of you who are responsible home share folk. I, I can literally think of someone who owns their home, operates a home share in their backyard, is their neighborhood president, is their neighborhood president, and has one of the most beautiful gardens and backyards you will ever see in your life. So I'm not here to demonize folk, and I think that's very important to notice as well. But we have to acknowledge the reality of this housing crisis. We, we just have to get our arms around it. So, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate it.
So councilmembers Hammond and Cooper, do you want to go ahead and move these as prescribed here to be referred to the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission?
Just kidding.
So we'll bring up, I guess, motions here. This would be for item A. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then we'll bring up item B. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Now, items C through F all relate to municipal judge appointments, all of which has been vetted by the Judiciary Committee. And so I'd call on the Chair, Councilman Stone Seifert, to walk us through this.
Judiciary Committee, it's something we do. When the contracts expire, we, we review and sit down with each other and talk about the different judges, their performance. We look at a survey, and these are our recommendations set forth in C through F, please.
Hmm? What, what did you say, Tom?
I said, these are our recommendations.
Yeah, set forth.
Item C through F.
Right, got it.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll want to do one at a time, though, I suppose.
At this time, I'll move for item-
Kenny, can we do C through F in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll do it one at a time.
I'll move for item C at this time, please, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right. This is the appointment of Donald O. Kiffin. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item D? Okay. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Then we have item E. This designates the vice presiding judge. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now item F.
Move item F at this time, please.
This designates the special judges. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you to the Judiciary Committee, and thank you as well, obviously, to our judges for their service. Okay, item five, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager?
The only item that we have today, or the two items we have today, are Claims of Payroll, that can be found on okc.gov, and then also the Quarterly River Sport Foundation Report. And we're glad to take any questions on that, if you have any, or to follow up if needed. That's all that I have.
Okay. Item six, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B. We could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item seven, Requests for Uncontested Continuances. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, beginning on page 24, item 1101, Unsecured Structures. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item D, 1236 Southwest 22nd Street, the owner is secured. Item E, 1416 Northwest 30th Street, the owner is secured. Item F, 1415 Northwest 34th Street, the owner is secured. And item K, 801 Northwest 90th Street, the owner is secured. Continuing on page 24, item 11P1, Abandoned Buildings. These items are stricken from the agenda. Item E, 1236 Southwest 22nd Street, the owner is secured. And item H, 801 Northwest 90th Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items that I have.
All right. Item eight, Revocable Permits and Events. Item A is a revocable permit with Mesa Park Neighborhood Association for MesaFesta on September 29th, and we have Dr. Amy Newberry here to speak.
And we are really excited, September 29th, we are hosting MesaFesta again. We have a great lineup of vendors, and our committee is steering a really unique event that our, our community and our neighbors love.
Indeed. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, I know, yeah, this is always such a beloved event, I think really for the whole ward and really for the whole city. I see people from all over coming, coming to Mesa Park for this, so I'm very proud to move for approval.
We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item B is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Oklahoma Pride Alliance to hold the Oklahoma Pride Alliance Downtown Pride Parade on June 30th. And we have Kylan Durant here to speak.
Good morning. Yeah, we're super excited. We've got a three-day festival ahead of that as well, where we're bringing Big Frida, if you haven't heard. Super excited for that. We will also have a full day on Saturday with our Community Resources, our Family Zone, and our Youth Zone. And then it will culminate in a Pride Parade on Sunday, June 30th. It will be, it'll, it'll step off from Walker, head down, take a left on Oklahoma City Boulevard, and then in- and then into the park. And we're super excited to celebrate the queer community and all that it has. And then we will end our festival with a Beyonce Drag Brunch, and we're super excited for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond?
Well, yes, this has also become a very beloved event for Ward 6 and very, very humbled to get to host it within Ward 6. Appreciate all the work you all do to make it sort of a spectrum of opportunities and ways for people to engage and celebrate, kind of just depending on what their interest is and sort of from all the youth and family programming to the concert. Like, just a lot of really wonderful, wonderful time to celebrate. So I am very happy to move for approval.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Now we will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have items A through N, and we do have a presentation on item D, so maybe we'll start there.
Yes, so this is the MFA budget. As the Board of the Municipal Facilities Authority, we want to make sure each year that we present the budget. Nicole Tower is here with the Budget Office. She'll present the budget and give us the overview. A lot of the items that are in this budget are also approved as transfers or exchanges that happen in the operating budget that we've already approved. But we want to make sure that you get an opportunity to see what else is included in this budget.
Hi, good morning. My name is Nicole Tower. I'm with the Office of Management and Budget here at the city. And today I'm here to present to you the OC MFA budget for FY '25. So there are a couple of different budgets that you'll get to see today. Right after me, you'll get to hear about the PPA budget. And I like to think of the difference between the two as MFA is more like inward-facing here at the city and PPA is more outward-facing. So the OC MFA, the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, is a trust of the city that provides a mechanism that allows for multi-year contracts with vendors, such as health insurance providers, and allows for the maintenance of adequate reserves for things such as worker compensation claims. At the last council meeting, the city budget was adopted. The MFA budget that is being presented today's primary source of revenue is from city funds from that adopted budget. Now we can look at the specifics of the budget. Overall, the trust budget is just under $146 million. You can see the various purposes on this slide. Health insurance is by far the biggest portion, at 79 million or 54%. This comes from both the city and its employees as they contribute to the premiums paid for health insurance. There are also several similar functions to health insurance in this budget. The city's property and liability insurance is about 15 million or 10%, and workers' compensation is projected to be about 12 million or 8%. We also pay for unemployment claims through the MFA, but those are relatively small, at about 225,000. The second-largest category is information technology, at 20 million or 14%. This is one of the areas that utilizes the ability to enter into multi-year contracts for things such as citywide computer systems, the radio system, E-911, and other IT-related services. The general purpose or other category includes annual financial audits, professional legal services, and code enforcement-related contracts. The city also uses the MFA for advanced capital funding for geo-bonds. We have established a revolving fund in the MFA that allows the Public Works Department to begin the design work on geo-bond projects before the projects are sold, before the bonds are sold for a project. Once the bonds are sold, the bond funds purchase the plans from the MFA, and the city can start the work on the project more quickly. The repayment from the geo-bonds replenishes the advanced capital funding account and allows for additional projects to initiate using this funding. When we look at revenue, health insurance contributions from the city and its employees is the largest source, at 77 million or 52%. Transfers from various funds, such as the IT or the risk internal service funds, is the largest source, the second-largest source, at 42 million or 28%. Fund balance is the next-largest, at 12 million or 8%. Finally, there are several miscellaneous revenue sources that account for just under 10% of the revenue. On the expense side, payments for other services and charges dominate at 136 million or 93%. And this makes sense because things such as insurance premiums and IT contracts all fit into this category. One thing to note is there are no employees in the MFA, which is why you don't see any personnel-related costs. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was the only presentation on MFA, and staff has not requested an executive session on M2.
I would ask, are we going to executive session for M1?
All right. Let's bring that forward for a motion. We have a motion in a second to go into executive session on M1. Cast your votes. Fails three to six. We're back on the MFA agenda.
I'd vote separately on that item, please.
All right. So we need to bring up a motion for item M1. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed six to three.
Mayor?
Yes. I know. I have a, I'm sorry, just a follow-up questions about the MFA.
Sure.
The health insurance component, could you explain why we include that under the MFA? Again, please, sorry, just, oh, hi.
Christian York, Budget Office. I might help with that question. So we engage in multi-year contracts with Blue Cross Blue Shield for our benefits for our employees. And so we provide a mechanism to fund that through payroll. So most of our employees are in the general fund. We move it over to the MFA, and then that's where we pay our bills from. But that allows us to get into a multi-year contract. You can imagine the disruption if we tried to go out for contract every year on health insurance.
Okay. No, that's helpful. That's what I was thinking, just wanted to clarify. Thank you so much.
While you're here, I saw myriad gardens on there as far as something that's a part of MFA. Can you explain that to me?
I don't have that information in front of you, but I'm happy to get that. I'm not tracking that off the top of my head, ma'am.
Is that, do we pay that contract out of there? Is it like we transfer it into the MFA and then make payment on that?
It says expenditures, myriad gardens, but it's also a part of, no, I thought I saw it again. I thought I saw it on another page, but-
But I think because it's a multi-year contract, that possibly we transfer that out of parks into the MFA and then make the payment on that contract for the operations. I'm sorry, let's watch.
In page five, yeah. The revenues, myriad gardens, and the budget for the next fiscal year is extremely increased from previous years. So just curious about that. But also, as we look at myriad gardens and these other, like, I would say privately managed facilities that are still public facilities, if you will, the concern arises when we have these public facilities and some have line items and some don't, especially those that we know may need some support or some type of way or revenue stream. And we find ways to get creative for most, but not all. So I just wanted to point that out because I do see it on page as an expenditure, but I also see it as a revenue with that as well.
So we'll follow up. We'll get additional information on that in the follow-up.
All right. Well, if there's no other questions, we can adopt the remainder of the OSMFA agenda, which is items A through L and N. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we do have a presentation as well on item E.
Yes, this is the PPA budget. Steve Akins with the Budget Office will present this. This is similar, too. There's a lot of the expenditures, there's more expenditures really than the MFA has that are outside of the operating budget, but a lot of things tie back into the operating budget. And I'll let Steve lead us off here and walk us through this budget.
Good morning. I'm Steve Akins from the Budget Office. The Oklahoma City Public Property Authority is a trust of the city, and it provides a mechanism to allow for, again, multi-year contracts. And it funds items such as the fairground improvements, golf course operations, MAPs, facility-related activity, and sports facility improvements. The budget for FY '25 is 62.1 million. The MAPs-related contracts and the fairgrounds expenses, both are at the largest expenses, at 21.1 million. The third-largest category is the golf course, at 13.6 million. And then rounded out with sports facilities, natural gas, some other expenses, and culture and recreation. And the next slide. The revenue, the largest revenue source is 18.8 million from hotel tax. Second-largest revenue source is transfers from the general fund, at 17.4 million. Golf course revenue is 12.3 million, and rounded out with 10.1 million from fund balance. Various funds, 4.6 million, 1.3 million from miscellaneous revenues, ballpark ticketing fees, refunds and such. The expenses by category, the largest expense is other services, at 25.9 million. And this includes contracts for the ASM management, contracts for the Oklahoma River Projects, natural gas, operational expenses, the PACOM Center, et cetera. Second-largest expense is transfers at 8.9 million, which was returning the tax to the hotel tax fund and offices and transfers for debt service and capital improvements. The third-largest expense is debt service at 8.6 million, and includes the fairground improvements, this debt paid by hotel tax. Then capital outlay at 6.5 million, personnel services, personnel services at 6 million, and materials and supplies, 6.2 million. And with that, I'd be able, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's no questions, we could adopt the PPA budget as well as all the other items, which brings us through item F, A through F. Got a motion in a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Now we'll adjourn OC PPA, reconvene as the council, where we have the consent docket, item nine. There are no scheduled presentations on this docket. Is there any item that a council member wishes to pull out for separate vote or separate comment or question?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to hear about item ED, Edward David.
Okay. Got it?
And BR and BS, please.
BR and BS? Okay.
Item AZ.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we will take them in order, which means we'll start right there. Item AZ, Councilwoman Nice.
Thank you. I was just, I was hoping to get more information on where we are and what this particular item is for.
Hi, I'm Chris Varga from the Planning Department, Housing and Community Development. This item relates to one of our affordable housing loan agreements that was done with our ARPA funds, one of the nine that were approved. Particularly, this item had a starting date of September 30, 2024. Oh, excuse me. Originally, it said September 30, 2023. And because of delays in getting permits and other issues, they're not ready to start yet until 2024. They are in the process of gearing up. I think they will get their permits in August, and we'll be ready to start immediately thereafter. They also have, the item includes a subordination agreement for a second, permanent lending financing. They have, the original agreement had a subordination agreement for the construction financing, and this one will include the permanent lender. With all this, with the extension, they still intend to complete the project by about a year from now, September, October of '25.
Okay, thank you very much. My concern, which I brought this up initially when this was proposed to receive funding, was the fact that this project says affordable housing. However, it's not affordable housing. And the fact that this particular project is destined to continue the gentrification efforts within our community and within our neighborhood, specifically because this was a rundown apartment complex, and all of those folks had been removed once it was closed. And, you know, no disrespect to the current owners, but when we're putting a volleyball court in the middle of northeast Oklahoma City, that raises some eyebrows of what we're actually doing, especially pertaining to the conversation of what affordable housing looks like and what it's supposed to be and do. So I am going to ask that we, I want to vote separately on this particular item because I just, you know, I think it's, it, these things are hard, and they're harder because of the fact that when we have decisions being made without truly looking at the footprint of certain communities, we are causing, not, you know, us personally, but what the decisions that we make are creating more of an impact of what either has continued to happen or will further what is taking place. And these, this one, and there was another specific one on Northeast 30th that is also getting some funding, and I am, I'm using the word concerned today because I'm concerned about it, too. I have high reservations about how these things are changing our community, and I want it to be openly heard that I am continually getting the brunt of why are you gentrifying our community and our neighborhood? When in fact, I can't do it by myself. There are so many factors that happen, and these types of decisions are always some could-be factors as well. So I appreciate the efforts of what we are doing, but I am extremely concerned with the efforts of what the property owner is doing, not so much as what we're doing, because I understand we need affordable housing. But being able to really, truly say these are things that could help our communities that need them the most. We've already seen people be pushed out because of what has taken place. So I'm going to ask that we vote on this separately. And also, while I'm on it, Mayor, I apologize, but BC and BF are also things that I'd like to hear more about as we work towards the other items that were pulled from this agenda.
Okay. Why don't we start with this separate vote on item AZ?
Mayor, can I ask a follow-up? Am I reading this memo correctly? Will the rents be at 60% of the area median income?
Yes. All of our ARPA funding that's required by the federal government and all the agreements that we passed, it's 60% of area median income, yes.
But your concern, Councilwoman, about the current, the residents who were there at the previous apartment complex being displaced by this project is what you're suggesting?
Not just that, but the fact that also the way these are, they had, if I'm correct from when I toured this when they first started, that depending on the color of said townhouse- from when I toured this when they first started, that depending on the color of said townhouse lets you know what the amenities are. It's either affordable or it's not. So hopefully that is not the factor now, but to my knowledge, that's what they were working on in the process of when I talked to them.
Mr. Varga, she had a look on your face with that comment, is that's...
That's news to me. I don't know anything about that comment.
And granted, you know, I had an intimate, you know, tour of this as they were beginning this project, so that may not have been something that was outwardly said to anybody.
Okay. So do we want to take that vote now? I think it probably makes sense, keep us in order. So we bring up a motion for item AZ. We have a motion in a second.
Wait, this is to vote for it?
This is, yes, this is to...
We can still move it?
Adopt the amendment.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't going outside of your, okay.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes seven to two. And then now, onto item BC, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I'd just like more information on this bidding process, and I just want to make mention again of my, I'm not sure how to express my concerns about it, but the fact that we had $2 million for this effort, and the money continues to dwindle as we go through this process, to where our community is not going to have the adequate funding in order to have a realized park that they had dreamed, dreamed forward. And that in itself is problematic for me, because this is the only thing that they asked for, but yet, as we continue to go through this process, we paid over $500,000 for the property itself, which was not valued at such, or over $3,000, $300,000, I'll say that. And now, this demolition could cost well over possibly $100,000 to do, so if you do the math, that continues to dwindle the funding for said park, for this part of our community, which again, is frustrating for me, as this is what this community had truly continues to ask, are we going to have money for our park? So just want to know what we're doing and how we're going to keep the costs as low as possible for our residents to get the park that they dreamed about.
I'm Shannon Ince from the Planning Department, and this is a project we've been working off for about seven years now, so we're glad to see it come to fruition. The community requested that the school building, the former Dewey School, be demolished for, to have a park built in the neighborhood. And so we're at the point now to where we're ready to bid out to have the demolition done. It's going to cost, we estimate, around $114,000 to $120,000. We should be able to open the bids around August 21st. The community's been involved in this. The community came and visited with me and walked through the building previously. We decided on a few items that we want to salvage to be placed back into the park design, so we're happy about that, and we are going to store that, those items, in the, on the site, inside of a container. And so we're ready to go out to bid. We have about $1.6 million left after that to do construction of the park. We were able to save some money by doing the design in-house. Our Parks Department and Parks Designers, landscape architects worked on that. So that did save us a lot of money versus having to go out and do that with a consultant. So we should have about $1.5, $1.6 million to do the park. The design so far looks phenomenal. I think the community will be very proud of it. It's incorporating a lot of the fun amenities that they wanted in terms of representing a butterfly garden and some heritage gardens within it, and so have a lot of green space, a lot of trees, trail system, bicycle, or, sorry, basketball courts and so on, so we think it'll be a very, very good amenity for the neighborhood.
Do we know if this will be an adaptable park?
I don't know. I don't know that for sure.
Okay. I'd like for us to look at the efforts of us having an adaptable park within northeast Oklahoma City, because we currently do not have one in our inventory, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't think the neighbors would oppose to us having an adaptable park within this part of our community.
Okay. Yeah, they did, everything that they requested so far, we've pretty much been able to accommodate with the exception of a splash pad. Can't do that, but everything else they've asked for, like the outdoor exercise equipment, we've been able to incorporate that in the design.
Is there a reason why we can't do a splash pad?
The cost, cost of maintenance and just cost of, the overall cost of the amenity.
Do we know how much that cost is?
Not exactly, but I would say probably about a half a million dollars, if not more, and then annual maintenance, I think is, would be prohibitive.
So the amount of the building and the demolition, we probably could have had a splash pad. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Shannon. I appreciate your work on this.
Okay, thank you.
And item BF, Councilwoman Nice?
Thank you. Just curious as far as those maintenance, that I know we, we all, every time we get to this point, those are where my, I always question the things that need to be repaired and those last-minute things that we need to say, are they fixed, are they done, in order for us to truly say, yes, let's accept these maintenance bonds? So I'm just curious where we are, because I know for sure, I had raised the question about this once before, not too long ago, about particularly the Willa D. Johnson Recreation Center, about some things that needed to be repaired. So just curious where we are and how that process is working.
Sure. Debbie Miller with the Public Works Department, I can answer your questions. This item BF is the final acceptance for the Willa D. Johnson Recreation Center. Everything has been complete. The punch list is completed, so all of those items should have been repaired.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you. Next up is item BR, Councilwoman Carter.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Miller. BR and BS kind of are concurrent, are run together on this, so we can get them both knocked out, if that's okay with you. I just basically wanted to kind of make a public acknowledgement and say thank you for your hard work and previous Director Winger's work on this. These are roads that did not have funding, that have been absolutely horrendous. In fact, we were able to fit one car in one of the potholes that we found on one of them. So this has been about two years coming that we've worked together to really try to find the funding and get this thing moved forward for our residents in the far west part of our city, and I just wanted to say thank you very much. And if there's anything that we need to know or anything else that you want to get and kind of explain, please do.
Sure. Items BR and BS are both for funding approval for two county of agreements, one with Oklahoma County, one with Cleveland, Canadian County. One is for North Cemetery Road, West Britton to West Hefner, and the other is for North County Line Road with West Welshire Boulevard to West Britton Road. So these, these two items actually approve the funding, and the agreements will be on the July 2nd meeting with each county.
Thank you very much.
I want to know what kind of car fit in that pothole, though. I'm very curious.
It was a Beetle.
Okay, I'll say that, thank you.
All right, finally, item ED, Councilwoman Peck.
Sure, I think I've got it now. Just looking to see what's going on with this particular item.
Sure. So David Todd, MAPS Program Manager, item ED is a long-range plan, and it was an item that was specifically authorized in the MAPS four implementation plan, and it has a lot of pieces in it. I want to point out that this contract also includes a $600,000 grant from ACOG that Embark was able to secure to help fund this. But some of the things that are in this include studies for the RTA and FTA, some software modeling, and then what we think is really important is some more grant application assistance, and that's even spilled over into the BRT line that you'll see in the coming weeks, that we believe that it qualifies now for some FTA assistance and get the funding, so that we can extend it and make it better. So there's a lot of pieces in this.
Thank you, David. I'm very excited about the future and the relationship with the RTA and ACOG and some of the upcoming expansion recommendations for West OKC. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, I missed one. I'm sorry, but it's an exciting one. Director Miller, item BJ? If you could, I'm sorry, item B, Baker John, yes. Specifically, so it's sidewalks, but could you note, because I think the public will want to hear this, the Northwest Expressway sidewalks that we're discussing as it relates to the bridge replacement from the bond?
Debbie Miller, Public Works Department, I'm here to discuss this amendment. This is to the consultant contract to add some additional work. The contract actually includes Northwest Expressway from 63rd to Mosteller and from Mosteller to Villa Avenue. So this will actually connect to 63rd Street all the way back to the east, and so it is in conjunction with the BRT to help with that transportation. We also have some improvements along North Villa and 30th and 19th.
Yeah, I am so excited. Bellout West is very excited as a neighborhood. They almost didn't believe me when I told them that the bridge replacement would have sidewalks coming down onto Expressway, so I wanted to hear it from the director's mouth in public.
Yes, we will have connections to the May Avenue Bridge that we are working in replacement, so everything will jive together.
It's thrilling to me, just truly, truly thrilling to be able to connect bulk from that library heading to the west. That was a request. I truly can't believe this is happening. I am ecstatic, so thank you so much for your work on that.
Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes all the items we've pulled out, so now we can vote on the consent docket, save the item that was previously adopted. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes.
Todd and I don't have it.
How do you wish to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for both? Passes unanimously. All right, item 10 is the concurrence docket. We have items A through F. We can vote with one motion? A motion in a second, cast your votes.
I think my screen is frozen from the last vote.
Okay, how do you wish to vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval, rezoning 19619 Thomas Drive from R1 to PUD 1995. Councilman Stone Cypher, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This came before Planning Commission on April 25, '24 with a recommendation of approval. There are no protests, and I'm not aware of anyone signed up to speak.
They have not.
At this time, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 1103 Lifestyle Drive from PUD 20A and PUD 20B to PUD 2002. Councilwoman Carter, no one has signed up to speak. Okay. Sorry, just reading through a couple things. I'll move for approval. A motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval, rezoning 10627 Southwest 29th from AA to PUD 2005. Councilwoman Peck, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing no protest in the Planning Commission either, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11D is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 340 Eckrodt Street from I-1, I-2, AE-1, AE-2 to PUD 2007, AE-1 and AE-2. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed her speak.
Thank you. The application is for industrial development with shared access, so basically, we have some areas with I-1 and I-2, and we're converting some of that I-1 to the rest of I-2. So with that, I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item E was an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 15901 North Rockwell from AA to SPOD 1614. Councilman Stone Cypher, no one has signed up to speak.
Yes, this was approved by the Planning Commission on April 25, 2024. At that time, there were no protests, so I will move for approval, please.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, items 11F, 1 and 2 are related. 2 is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval, rezoning 13100 Northwest 10th from AA to STD 1618. And then item 1 is an amendment to the master design statement for this item. Councilwoman Peck, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to go ahead and make a motion to, for item 1, the amendment to the master design statement. There is, the number 2 TE from Planning Commission already asked, but it indicated to the greatest extent possible, so I asked the applicant to ensure that those streets remain, so they agreed, and we'll be making that change.
Okay. So first, we've got a motion for F1, the amendment to the master design statement. Got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now, F2, the ordinance on final hearing.
So I'll move that for approval, as amended.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11G is an ordinance on final hearing, amending ordinance number 27082, is adopted by the council on May 24, closing a portion of South Harvey Avenue between Southwest 24th and 25th. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, this is an exciting step for Capitol Hill and the evolution of their plaza area, so I'm very excited to move for approval and take the next step in this process for them.
All right, we have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11H is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval, closing a portion of an east-west platted utility easement west of Angel Oak Drive and north of Southwest 44th. Councilwoman Peck, no one has signed her speak.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, item I is an ordinance on final hearing, adopted the class and corridor revitalization project plan. We had a presentation previously on this. This is the second of two meetings for this. This is the second of two meetings for this adoption. So if there is no comment or questions, we can proceed. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item J, this is an ordinance on final hearing, extending the corporate limits of the city of Oklahoma City. As described here, there are a few people who have signed up to speak. We had a presentation on this in our last meeting. Maybe we'll do the residents first and then if there's any comments or questions from the council, we can handle that and the staff here as well to address anything that needs to be. So we'll begin with Deborah Brown. And if everyone would state their name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Deborah Brown.
Hi, good morning. My name's Deborah Brown. I reside at 15500 West Reno. I used to be the farthest house west in Oklahoma City limits, but I do have a couple neighbors now, which is, which is, they're family farm friends, so I have enjoyed their company. The reason I'm here today, I just want to express my concern about the future annexation of the land at 10th and Gregory, which is just west of the CE Paige Airport. I have connections to both sides of that property. My parents and grandparents owned land where my brother is going to be moving. That is west of the airport, which is not in Oklahoma City limits, but it's going to sit right next to this. I live directly south. If you saw the hay bales on the news where the tornado went through, my house sits directly east of that. I'm, like I said, I'm at Oklahoma City limits and in Ward 3. Couple of things I want to address today. This whole process with dealing with the Alliance, I don't know if you guys know how they operate, and you may, but I just recently bought a car and it's kind of like that, back and forth, low-ball mounts. It's kind of the same tactics. And Mayor, please don't take this the wrong way. I just, I had seen you, I watch you a lot on a certain news station. And there was talk about not being aware of any expansion. And then now, here we are. So I'm not sure what I, I want to believe. No one from the Alliance will tell me what exactly this mega site is going to be. So what do I need to be concerned about? You tell me you can't tell me, but you want me to be for it. If we don't know details, how can we approve it? How do we have safety? And there's a lot of other things that I'll get to. My land sits in the agricultural preserve from the content, that's in the comprehensive plan of OKC. I moved out there in 2003 because of that rural preserve. And I want to keep that in my area. And I don't think a mega site is a good neighbor. And Plan OKC addresses that also. It talks about, the Plan OKC is to preserve large-scale acreages used primarily for agricultural purposes and existing development patterns expected to remain unchanged for a long period of time. Plan OKC also states without careful planning of infrastructure extensions and development in new areas, we will continue to use exist infrastructure inefficiently while incurring higher costs to Oklahoma City. The other reasons it's a bad idea, we've got Banner School that's in the area, increased traffic. Police response time to my house was over an hour while I sat there in my driveway wanting to know if someone was in my house. I don't know if anybody here would want that next to their house. Lack of utility infrastructure.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there a final statement? We're over time.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just really would want y'all to question what is coming next. I know this is just annexation, but the next is planning. And I just hope that you would question and vote no for what's coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Warren Low.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thanks for listening. I'm Warren Low. I'm an orthopedic surgeon at McBride Orthopedic Hospital. And I've lived on Simron Road directly across from the airport for the last 40 years. We two moved out there for, to live in the country and raise our five kids and 15 grandchildren. I represent the West Yukon Neighbors Association and we strongly oppose the annexation of this land. My house, talking about tornadoes, you probably saw the house that was destroyed next to CE Paige Airport just recently on the news, helicopters were flying around. I live next door to them. If I had a good potato gun from my youth, I could probably hit this piece of property that we're talking about. And yet, I have never been notified by anybody about anything that's going on here. I've not received any notices that land was for sale. I've not, I only got word of it, I heard about it from word of mouth. But there are only two possibilities regarding this annexation. The first would be to increase Oklahoma City's urban sprawl and further stress the meager infrastructure supporting the area and also dilute the scant emergency services that are available. I've also had to wait over an hour on 911 calls of people invading my home. The second possibility would be to develop this and the surrounding acreage into a large industrial site. This would require rezoning this land from AA or agricultural plan, according to OKC Plan 2015, to an industrial designation. Last year, a similar proposal was put forward to rezone 120 acres across from the airport just north of me from AA to RA for single-family residential homes, which is certainly much more benign. After an extensive report by the staff of the Planning Commission, the recommendation was to deny the rezoning and the Planning Commission unanimously agreed. Many negatives were enumerated, including absence of water and sewer lines, dilapidated rural roads, adverse environmental impact effects on Banner School and their bus routes, lack of current emergency services, alterations to CE Paige Airport, declining residential property values, increased heavy truck traffic and contamination of land, water and air. And obviously, you've heard all this. I could go on and on. In the past year though, since the Planning Commission denied this previous application for a much more benign enterprise, nothing has changed. None of these factors have changed. With all due respect.
We're a little bit over time, so maybe just kind of bring it to a conclusion.
One paragraph. With due respect, if the unanimous wisdom of the Planning Commission last year was that it was inappropriate to rezone 120 acres of agricultural preservation land to family homes, would it not be even more inappropriate to annex this 320 acres as the first building block in a several-square-mile industrial park on land that has been set aside and preserved for farmers and family? This effort may be legal, but is it fair and just to those who have invested their lives, homes and families since the land run to build a community to pass on to their children? Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Andrew Harris.
Andrew Harus, 1219 Clausen Drive. I represent a couple of the property owners that are affected by this. Ms. Brown and Dr. Low hit on two of the points of my 15-page objection, which really, I think, highlights six issues that should be considered. In my opinion, and I think one which this council should address, which the Planning Commission did not address, what is the cost to develop this? I understand that there's going to be effect to the property owners. This is nuisance per se. They don't want, none of these people want this economic mega site developed next to them. However, for purposes, and I, I completely understand the city's desire, what the benefits are, what the potential benefits are of an economic, of what this mega site may, may bring to the city. However, the staff's report clearly shows, and I, if we can pull up my objection, I don't know if that's possible. If you have the agenda packet, I can reference the page numbers. But if you look at the concerns that are raised and the maps that are provided, it's page 9399, as for water, and they clearly say it's not efficient to serve. But they don't tell us what the cost is going to be to actually serve this. We look at sewer. It says need for major investment. What is that major investment? I've attended plenty of city council and planning commission meetings and we talk about roads. We just heard about a pothole the size of a car. The roads out here are not in good shape and we are going to have to, if you're going to put this mega site out here, you're going to have to put a significant amount of investment in roads. What is the cost of that? At Planning Commission last month, we looked at some estimates and it's significant. Why is this not being reported to the city? Why, why are we not taking this into consideration before we make the decision to annex this property? I feel that even though this is just a first step, and while it may have met the requirements for annexation, it seems as if we're being short-sighted of, we're going to bring this on, we're going to expand this city, which Mayor Holt and many other council members have stated is too large. But here we are expanding it even further without telling the citizens what the cost of this is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the citizens who've signed up to speak. So we're on the item now. Are there any comments or questions from council?
I'd like to make a few comments. I think this is the fourth, fifth or sixth, somewhere in there in my time on council, that we've looked at annexing new land into the city. And it continues to frustrate me that as much as some folks on this horseshoe talk about governing from the middle, these annexation committees that are put together do not have any balance in the makeup of who is on them as far as the parts of the city that we represent. We constantly are faced with very frustrating decisions about where to use resources and constantly being told there's never enough. And a lot of that is because of our urban sprawl and our past choices and sort of inheriting those choices. And it, it is frustrating that we continue to come to this horseshoe with these proposals to annex land when there has not been a balanced conversation being, being had prior. And to the point of some of the speakers, at least a few of us on council have no knowledge of what, what is, what is being proposed because all of that is done with a huge lack of transparency and accountability citing, you know, issues of NDAs and other things with trying to attract employers. And that, in my mind, is a very poor way to govern. And, and especially from representing folks that are in the core of the city, where we're using those, those resources most efficiently with the density. It is very frustrating to constantly be annexing land where we are subsidizing the cost of, low cost of living for folks in the urban sprawl and not preserving that agricultural land and landscape. It's just very frustrating to constantly come to this and then hear these refrains of governing with balance or some kind of middle when, when I don't see balance. I just see one side being represented and being pushed forward without really considering the impact on the people, the 80-plus thousand people that I represent and the way that our resources are being stretched without really adequate plans to address equity in that conversation, ensuring that when we are annexing these new plots of land that we're doing with an eye towards how do we actually sustain the infrastructure in those areas without putting even more burden on, on our, the, the limited resources that, that we're presented with allocating. So I'm, I can't support this as per usual.
Mayor, could we have either Kenny or Amanda speak to the ordinance, the status of it, how it began and where it's at today?
The current ordinance that's being proposed is on for final hearing. This would go into effect 30 days after if the vote was to approve this ordinance. Is that what your question was, Councilman?
Well, it's kind of, Kenny related to me kind of the history of it and I just kind of wanted to walk through that. So everybody will have the benefit of it.
Yeah, Kenny Siddle, President of the Alliance. Thank you for having me here this morning. Again, this is something, I think, we started this process last year, looking at, there was an agreement between the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, INC Trust and the council to put funds to go seek to try to find, put together a site of 1,000 acres plus. I will tell you, you know, from my experience, we, Oklahoma City has moved into a different echelon of what we're competing for. We need sites that are this size. There are not a lot of sites in Oklahoma City. And today, we're just talking about one piece of property, but it's part of a, a bigger plan, putting land together, trying to get a thousand-plus acre site. We've lost various opportunities over the last four or five years. That's part of, you know, the documentation that was in our plan. Again, want to reiterate, this process is something that we don't have the power to take people's property for economic development within this area or these funds. These are things we reached out to folks, made offers. Some people accepted, some people did not. So this is something that this piece, this particular piece of property lies right adjacent to Oklahoma City. It's a good piece of property. It, it, you know, if you look around the city, there's just not a lot of sites that have, you know, minimal impacts to residents, et cetera. The other part of this, we've talked about, you know, this is the annexation. We did make a conscious decision to bring this in without zoning changes so that we can have that conversation. There is, as we talked about, I think, in the presentation previous, there is not any zoning regulations currently in the unincorporated county land. So folks could essentially do whatever they want on that property really without any discussions. The other, the other thing, yes, we fully recognize there is not adequate roads, infrastructure, all those things. That's part of what we do, finding ways to fund that. And that's not necessarily to burden, you know, the other funding sources of the city. Things that are big employment sites are eligible for things like tax increment financing. They're eligible for state has, has infrastructure funding to bring large employment sites. There's other tools that we look at. And again, if we don't find the way to do that, we're not going to develop something here. But we've got to put a site together. We've got to be able to market that site to users. And, you know, that's kind of the first step. I think, you know, we have a history of this, like the 577 development down at 240 and Eastern. You know, that's another example, putting the site together. And now we've got, you know, some really big things happening down there that are bringing jobs and investment to the city. And we had to find ways to fund the infrastructure down there that were not on the backs of the city.
Economic campus development. This recently, we've, we've had the good fortune of having Lock Supply deciding to build there, correct?
Yes, sir. They're building, they had a 750,000 to million square foot facility right there. And it's a really good development. We do things the right way. We, we, you know, we, we try to do them in a way that works well with the neighborhoods around them. But again, this is step one of trying to put a site together, bring this into the city so that it has all the protections, zoning, building permitting, et cetera, and has the tools to try to develop this in the future.
All right, any other comments or questions?
I have just a couple. I just, I just wanted to mention, you know, as we, we heard the introduction of this a couple of weeks ago, the concern or the word, magic word we kept hearing was jobs. And I, I want to continue to say, who's going to reap, or ask, who's going to reap the benefits of this? Because of us grabbing land that's surrounded by a whole different area of our city or not our city, those surrounding communities will receive more of a benefit, in my opinion, than we will. And, and also, just, you know, items ago, we were talking about a splash pad. And also, just, you know, items ago, we were talking about a splash pad. We can't even afford a splash pad for a park, but we are happy to spend ten million dollars for a piece of land. And those are things that I can't make add up. They make no sense to me in regard to recreation and the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, and one of our priorities is to make sure they have recreation, and we are able to take care of our families. So it is, again, as I said, which was quoted in the newspaper insulting, for us to have this type of process when we literally just voted on a budget and we were about to take away a recreation center for a whole community. And the things that we continue to prioritize that are not keeping our communities who are already in existence in mind with these continuous decisions, in my, in my opinion, of how we look at, how we support our residents and our neighbors. And the fact that, you know, within that same week, I saw two different news stories with the residents within the community, and everyone was trying to figure out what the heck is going on. You're not alone in trying to figure that out. So I will not be supporting this either.
Were you going to say something, Mayor?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, a few remarks. One, I don't envy my neighbor, Councilwoman Peck, with this decision, because, you know, jobs, and I understand, I, please understand that I understand. We don't always agree, but when we do, it's so fun, so I don't like when we disagree. So just wanted to say, I understand where you're from, if, we haven't even talked about whether or not you support this, but if you do, understand, I understand how you got there. That said, I am concerned, this is not, this, just this particular annexation, I have now performed weddings where I cite Boomtown, and I am very, very familiar with the history of sprawl, and how suddenly, over just about not even a handful of years, we went from eighty square miles to six-hundred-and-twenty-one. That, it happened barely five years in the late fifties through the sixties. Stanley Draper, just like Pac-Man, gobbled up existing municipalities and land, and here we are. I think it is one of the worst decisions we've ever made. Not everyone agrees with me, and that's fine, that's called conflict, but we also have conflict resolution. It is what it is, right? We can work through our differences in that way. So I'm not trying to be mean to people, I'm just saying I have a disagreement with that decision from a few decades ago, before I was born. But it costs us in present day those historical decisions, because I have residence in Lyons Park neighborhood. The roads, if you were to drive off of May, onto Twenty-seventh, between Portland and May Avenue, good luck, enjoy your tires. Even an upper-middle-class neighborhood like Crown Heights, I've told the story during the previous annexation request, an upper-middle-class, arguably upper-class neighborhood, is asking me, when will their roads receive resurfacing? Not just resurfacing, but we're talking about replacement of concrete in a lot of those instances. Shepherd, another strongly middle, upper-middle-class neighborhood, will they receive street resurfacing My resurfacing needs go on and on and on, and I'm going to have the very unfortunate task, when we do the bond next year, to tell some of those residents that not all of them are going to make the cut. And when we keep annexing land, we put more resurfacing responsibilities onto this council and its taxpayers. I know this is an uncomfortable conversation and truth to say. I understand that, I'm not making these as personal attacks, I am just giving you the world as it is. It's just the reality. I understand the economic needs of this city, I also understand its infrastructure needs. It's why I am such a proponent of transit-oriented development, to try and do development along transit routes in the urban core where jobs and education and recreation can be. It's the direction we should have gone before the Stanley Draper great annexation, but the world as it is, is what it is. So I just worry, we don't have to keep doing it, is what I'm saying. We do not have to keep following in the footsteps of Stanley Draper and his annexation vision. We don't, we can't stop that. And if people, if it's upsetting what I am saying, then hop in my Mazda three with me, and I will drive you on Twenty-seventh between May and Portland. I will walk with you on Twenty-seventh between May and Portland, and you explain to them why they have to wait. That's just, that's just really all it comes down to. I'm not anti any part of the city, I'm anti adding additional parks to the city. That's what I am saying. That's the difference. This is not a urban versus rural. I grew up in the rural suburbs. They made me, they defined me. My dad's a cowboy, we know the rural. So this is not about us versus them, but this is about protecting the us's who are already here and the land that we're supposed to steward. That's just, is, 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 it is what it is, and I'll still be friends with Councilwoman Peck when it's done, but I just needed to say that for the record. It would be a really difficult thing for me to ever support an annexation project. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Comments?
May I speak?
No, we've already concluded that part. Thank you for coming. But yeah, you have to sign up, and we've already passed that on the agenda.
Right. I was just asked as part of the West Yukon, and so I didn't realize the procedures.
Have you been here the whole time?
I have been here the whole time, yes, sir.
Oh, okay. When I was calling out the names, I assumed you would have, all right, fine, just go ahead, but keep it to three minutes. State your name and address.
I'll keep it less than three minutes. My name is Angie Knight. I am out on Cimarron Road. I have been out there for almost thirty years. I think the biggest thing myself and my neighbors are worried about is the annexation of the property, because we've raised families out there for a certain reason, we want it outside of town, but we just want honesty. I've already contacted real estate, a real estate agent, because I don't want my grandkids out in an area where there's traffic all the time. I think we just want honesty. We cannot stop a city from growing, but if you would just be honest with us as far as what is coming out there, we could make decisions on the fore side instead of the back side. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. All right, we can now, if there's no other comments?
Sure, I have a few.
Okay, sure.
So, as you can imagine, this is a very difficult decision. I have constituency and neighbors who have lived in an area, some of them since statehood, and the city has, has, has and is growing out to them, and we are and will grow all the way to the boundaries that we have set today. And anybody that lives within our boundaries that thinks otherwise is mistaken. It is why so many years ago, those boundaries were set out that far, there was a vision for this city to become bigger and better all along the way. And for decades, Oklahoma City residents and our neighbors throughout the state have asked their leaders to diversify our economy. It's not just about what it is going to do for the city of Oklahoma City, but that's exactly what the goal being achieved here today could do. While we don't yet know what business will come to our new mega site, nobody is withholding that information from you. It is, this is the first step in pursuing those alternatives, pursuing the folks that have come and that we have had to turn away in the past, pursuing twenty-five-hundred, thirty-five-hundred, five-thousand job partners to come to this city and to give higher-paying jobs and more opportunities to the residents that are already here. Is it going to benefit Yukon, Mustang, El Reno, Oklahoma City, Bethany, War Acres? Yes, that is our job. That is our job, to benefit the community that we live in, northeast side, south side. Everybody has the opportunity to benefit from a business that comes in and puts this many people to work. What this mega site could do for infrastructure for the west side of Oklahoma City that has been neglected for so many years, that it, that pendulum is swinging, but something like this could get those streets repaired faster, because the developer is going to have to do work out there to bring something like this. They are going to have to work with the city to bring water and sewer and improve the street infrastructure. You're right, it's not something that we can fully fund today. Something like this gives us an opportunity to bring another player in the game that helps us to fund all of the things that you're asking us for. It brings big players to the table who are great community partners, and it is our job, and it will go through planning commission, and it will ultimately come back to this council for whatever zoning is needed once we find a partner. And it's our job at that time to decide, is that, is that entity, whoever it may be, the right community partner for Oklahoma City in the metro area? But a mega site is more than just Oklahoma City. It is more than just Ward Three, it is more than just this body. We have an opportunity to make a difference here, and it is not an opportunity that I'm willing to pass on. With that, I will move for approval.
All right, we'll bring up that motion for item J. We have a motion in a second. Passes six to three. All right, eleven K is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing July second, final hearing on July sixteenth. This is kind of a cleanup ordinance, for lack of a better phrase, and do we have a little bit of an explanation?
Yes, Kalia Fisher with Municipal Counselor's Office is going to present this and explain what we're doing with this ordinance.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kalia Fisher, Assistant Municipal Counselor. This ordinance is being introduced to repeal several sections of city ordinance to conform with state and federal law. As outlined in the council memorandum, Sections eight dash ninety-five, eight dash one oh six, one oh nine, and one ten, all pertain to animal cruelty or the inhumane treatment of animals, and punished behavior that is otherwise punishable as a felony under Title Twenty-One of the Oklahoma statutes. Because there is a different state statute that states that a municipality cannot enact an ordinance that punishes behavior that is otherwise punishable as a felony, those sections are being repealed. Sections thirty dash three oh two and thirty dash three oh four relate to the carrying of weapons. The state legislature has preempted ninety-nine percent of all legislation pertaining to weapons, including the carrying of weapons, so that's why those sections are being repealed. And finally, Section thirty-two dash four fifty-eight pertaining to motor vehicles and traffic is being repealed because of federal law, specifically a Tenth Circuit case outlined in the memorandum. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. So we can take a motion, this is, as always, just introduction today. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, so it'll be set for public hearing on the second of July, final hearing on the sixteenth of July. Okay, item L is the public hearing for an ordinance that was described to us at our last meeting regarding signage around the Oklahoma City National Memorial. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we will close it and proceed to the public hearing found at M regarding this dilapidated structure here listed in the H.P. Landmark District. And we do have some folks who have signed up to speak under this public hearing, so I would ask them to state their name and address and keep their remarks to three minutes or less, and we'll start with Tammy Donnell.
Thank you, my name is Tammy Donnell. I've lived in the Paseo area my whole life. I'm here to protest the demolition of the church at twenty-five, twenty-two North Chertel. I was infant baptized there and grew up in this church, as was my father. He attended there as a child. He was born in nineteen seventeen, the year the church was built. There is significant historical value to this city and this neighborhood to preserve this church. The Historic Preservation Commission denied demolition, and a spud was obtained by stating numerous times that the church would be restored, saved, and/or rehabilitated. There have been experts in structural engineering, architecture, and Oklahoma history that have given professional opinions that the church can be saved. This city has forever lost First Christian Church at thirty-six and Walker. We that live in the historic Paseo area do not want to lose this hundred-and-seven-year-old church. Two other historic notes to this to be considered. Guernsey Street that runs behind the church was the first paved street in Oklahoma City, and at Twenty-Fourth and Guernsey, that is the lowest point in Oklahoma City. The Walcourt Building at northeast Thirteenth Street was given a second chance, and I ask that Northminster United Presbyterian Church be given a second chance also. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Zella Gibson?
Mayor, Council, Mr. Cooper, thank you so much for listening today. I am just here to support Paseo neighborhood for this historical church. Mr. Cooper was so kind to meet with us, and I do appreciate his time for that. We just know that in twenty-one, the owner of this property did go before H.P. to ask for everything that they are supposed to do, and they were granted, but yet, for some reason, they still neglected to do it. We also have neighbors that sent in letters, hopefully you were able to see those as well. We just feel that losing another historical church would just be a shame for Oklahoma City and Paseo neighborhood, and we hope that you deny this. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We also have the representatives of the owner signed up as well. I don't know if they want to speak or whatnot. Maybe I'll turn it over to you, Councilman Cooper, at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to hear from the representative for the property owner and then code enforcement, possibly Katie Frittel, and then we'll proceed.
Sure, David Box, five twenty-two, Call cord Drive. In the interest of time, I don't want to really regurgitate everything I said last time, but Tim Johnson has produced a structural engineering support, excuse me, report that supports the proposition that the city has put forward. It is a bit unique, the reason I signed up is I'm not the applicant, the city here is actually the applicant. But Tim's concluding a statement in his report states that the structure is high risk to the tenants and neighbors in the area. They are in such a state of decay and ruin that they pose an imminent threat to the public health or safety. Due to significant deterioration of key foundational and structural components, demolition of the structure is the only means of alleviating the imminent threat to the public health and safety. It is worth noting as well, my, I think my client found an article from the Oklahoma City Times dated April twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-eight, in which the Reverend Cox, I believe at the time, described the building as, quote, "old crumbling church that will require a miracle to be saved." That was nineteen seventy-eight. So here we are in two thousand twenty-four, the church moved out, it has been abandoned for quite some time, it is in a state of disrepair, it needs to be demolished, period, end of story.
Can we get the pictures of it back up? That'd be all right. That we are...
It's the, much of the ceiling's gone. It's completely open to the elements.
Seven or eight years ago.
Mr. Box, I asked you at the previous council meeting to reach out to the state's historical tax credit office. Would you mind walking us through what you learned from that conversation?
Sure. So, client reached out, and what they, and I believe Ms. Fiddle had stated this from the podium two weeks ago, but confirmed that if we were to even be considered eligible, the only way that the funds could be used would be if the sanctuary remained open in its original form. That, of course, doesn't work for our purposes. We're trying to bring housing to this area, and to leave a massive, open sanctuary as a, I guess, memorial to what was there decades ago serves no purpose.
And then, could you also, well, thank you. Please, Councilman.
If it's reestablished and opened up as a sanctuary, who is then responsible for maintaining it from that point on?
Whoever the developer, owner of the property would be at that moment.
So if the current owner of the property honors that, then he's responsible from this point forward to make sure it's maintained as a sanctuary and opened regardless of what goes on around it?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay, sorry.
Chad, would you mind, it's a sequel, and sometimes sequels just rehash the first one, and that's bad, but in this case, I think it's going to be useful. Would you mind rewalking us through? Last week, I asked you, how did this property come to exist on this agenda?
Sure. Chad Nagy, this is Code Enforcement Superintendent. We received the client... The property being unsecured initially, but as always, whenever we have an inspector out to a property, if they see other issues going on, they think that it's a life, safety, health issue, then we ask them to go ahead and work that property accordingly.
When you say...
In this case, they believed the property to be dilapidated and meet the criteria set forth by the state of Oklahoma to bring it to offer your consideration.
One more time, who reached out to you, to your office?
I believe it came through the Action Center.
Through the Action Center?
I believe so.
Did I reach out to you?
No, sir.
So I did not request the demolition of this church?
No, sir.
I really have to reiterate that again, because apparently, again, as I said last time, as if we were in middle school, someone has been saying that I requested the demolition of this building, and I need it on the public record, I did not. I would not. That is not what I do. But someone from the community did. It came to your attention, and I believe, is it state statute that kind of governs some of this?
It does. It tells us what we can consider to be a dilapidated property, and basically, that means it's not inhabitable. It doesn't support life, meaning it wouldn't have utilities, maybe the roof would be gone, maybe a wall would be collapsed. The majority of items we bring to our council are fire-related, of course. They've got massive holes in them and things of that nature. This building is actually collapsing, in my opinion.
And we've been in, Councilman, you asked for the photos. I went inside, we went inside, we went inside. I've been inside. I've walked this with a hard hat. I've stood on the floors. So you're concerned in terms of its current state about its safety to the surrounding neighbors? Would you mind explaining?
Sure. I don't know about you all, but it's a very attractive nuisance, and as, I can just kind of tell you like this, as a child, I was a very curious child. This would have been a place that I would have been curious of, always. They do as good a job as they can of securing it, but we tend to see buildings that are secured often unsecured, and then that danger for collapse and loss of life is extremely high. In any instance that we have a building, we believe is dilapidated.
Your concern is a child, curious child going in, but also maybe someone who's unhoused, for instance, and starting a fire in this way. This might be a question for Tim, because there's still this confusion amongst some neighbors that, we just heard Mr. Box say that to qualify for tax credits, and I really appreciate the patience of council. I just need you to know, for a lot of people, you heard Tammy, this is a sacred space, not only in terms of its religious background, but the events which took place inside of it, so we just need to kind of linger for a moment. Would you mind, there's some confusion in the community that you could, so if you just pause on this image, in fact, that you could, that an engineer could re, with the right amount of money, could restore this building. What have you learned from, and what is your background that would help us understand what you've learned?
Well, David read my opinion, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, sorry, and that opinion came from a couple of inspections. We made two separate inspections. The primary concern of the structure is the failure of the basement area, and the first-floor sanctuary area has a slanted floor. Before the contractor would even go in and investigate, he came in and doubled up on the, at minimum, doubled up on the structural support for the first floor. There is, there are a lot of timber and steel columns that were added to hold that floor up, just so you could occupy it. But take that out of the equation, the annex part, which is that piece right there on the square piece on the west side, was built after the original church building was added on. There's about a three-inch separation where that building has separated from the original church, and that's where the roof has split apart and caused all the drainage to get into the building and cause additional damage over the years. The columns, the primary columns of the sanctuary, the original square little sanctuary building, could possibly be salvaged, but, I mean, you'd end up taking everything else down to the basement level to build it back up.
So when you say everything down, you mean the walls like we're looking at right now come down?
Yes.
You're restoring a floor? Is that what I'm hearing?
You have to start at the structural bottom. There were some, we met with their structural engineer who was operating on a volunteer basis, Alan Kirkpatrick. I've known him for a number of years.
Which I appreciate you all. I invited him to go do a tour and talk to you.
We actually met twice.
Good.
I did. I met twice with him, and once in my office, the last time I met with him, and we talked through all this, what it would take, the what-ifs of what it would take to build that, and if you diminished your design and reduced the amount of square footage you wanted to use in the building, there's a possibility you could go in at the ground level and basically fill it, sorry, fill in the basement, and, you know, start from there and go up. And that would be basically creating a new foundation where the basement is today. That's a possibility, but again, it's almost a, it's a 90% demo to get to that point.
I just need this again on the public record. You're saying, at best, at best, the ground, but the walls that we are looking at right now, not preservable?
Well, in order to repair the foundation, you have to take the walls off of it and the weight off of it, and you can do it one at a time. There are ways to do that, but there are very, very expensive ways to do that that don't lead to an end result that meets the needs.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Tim? And then, Mr. Davidson, at the previous council meeting, which, I rehashed this because some of the people I talked to said they didn't watch the last one, so I wanted to get it again. We heard Mr. Box say 1978, four years before I was born, but you, in the previous meeting, mentioned that for the past 20 years, this property's been on your radar concern.
Right. I started as an inspector with our code enforcement division 19, 20 years ago or so, and this particular, the Paseo area is the area that I serviced at that time. This structure has been in decline for at least that long that I'm aware of. It's deteriorated and continued to just further deteriorate in that period of time.
Just two more things. One, there is also, again, as someone who likes to talk, I also listen very closely. And so one of the things I heard last week talking with some residents was this belief that if I just was persuasive enough to this council, that I could convince a majority of you to vote to not demolish this. My memory is, there were three no votes last time, or three people who voted to demolish it, and then I remember Councilman Stonecypher being concerned. I don't know what council's opinion is to now. I'd be curious to hear where you all are at, based on what you've heard. Yeah.
Yeah, I think in light of the fact that we have the Johnson and Associates engineering report in our own files, and it concludes that it's an imminent threat and safety issue to neighbors, passerbyers, especially children, for us to sit in and do nothing would be inappropriate. And I think that if someone wants to pursue this, they can go to district court and try to find some remedy there in the district court, but while we have this file, this report in our file that tells us you've got imminent safety and threat concerns with this building to others, I think we need to act sooner rather than later.
I see nodding heads. I just, again, there, people talk, people say things. I understand that. I just need it for the record, while I am pretty persuasive and have accomplished quite a bit on this horseshoe that I'm sometimes surprised I've pulled off, there are limits. I can't force people to do things they don't want to do. I just can't do that. I'm not magical. So I just need you all to hear that for yourself. I have not tried to convince one of these council members to demolish this structure. I am not telling them not to. They just, they have agency and they can speak for themselves.
Would you like me to make the motion? Would that make you more comfortable?
It will make me more comfortable. It will, and I appreciate that. Let me also just say, though, I am doing everything I can heading into the 2025 bond election, everything I can, not just to meet those housing needs I described earlier, but to make sure, as I did at 30th and Hudson when another church came down, that architecturally we are honoring the history of the neighborhood by, literally, they have to build something that looks like, complements Edgemere and Jefferson at 30th and Hudson. So what I'm asking, and if you wouldn't mind just confirming at the podium before we move forward, I have requested these windows, they seem salvageable, I hear they're salvageable. There's the doors on the west side, and I have requested that in this new development, that we honor the history of this church. It may not be to the totality that some folk would like, but I have requested that these windows, should they make it out of this moment, that heading into the HP, which would be the next step, right? HP would have to determine the look of whatever new design that, and I can't force HP to do it either, but I'm asking, I'm making the request for their consideration that the windows and the doors, and I even heard Micah say that this tower was something that they were interested in replicating?
So, yeah, we'll have to go to HP. You know, I've always had a soft spot in my heart for HP, so what my client would like to do is to donate these items to the HP Commission, and they can do with them what they see fit.
So that's on the public record. I just wanted you all to know that. So I can't, I'm not perfect. I can't make everything perfect, but I am going to make sure that at least some part of this 1917 history tries to live on. Okay, so, yeah, I appreciate you, Councilman Stonecypher. It really means a lot to me. And the only other thing I'd say with the bond is I'm trying to set aside money to preserve these buildings going forward.
I do need to add something real quick. If the council does decide in 1A, if they want to declare the property dilapidated, we will need to amend the resolution to read the establishing dates as July 19th, or June 19th and July 19th. There is a bit of an error there. We'll need to amend it to, from June 5th to July 5th to June 19th and July 19th, just as it is in N2.
Okay. Okay, so the first thing we need to do is a motion to amend, correct?
I think you could probably declare it in A or in 1, but you would have to amend probably 2, if I'm reading it correctly.
Well, 2 is really the only real action, and it's a resolution that presumably includes those dates, and so, yeah, we'd need a motion to just amend the resolution, and it can be, you can make it mark as described. We don't have to...
Yeah, and it would just be as to M2, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so would you like me to make that motion at this time? I'll make that motion at this time, please.
So this is a motion to amend the resolution, just to bring the dates up to date. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. Now we're back on the item as amended. Do we want to go ahead and move forward with consideration?
Yes. At this time, I'd move for the resolution declaring the structure is dilapidated.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. This is for item N2 as amended. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Item N1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Would you have someone who has signed up to speak? Andrew Haruz?
Hello again, Andrew Haruz, 1219 Colson Drive. I'm here on behalf of N1B, 2400 North Robinson Avenue. I'm actually also part-owner of this property. It sustained a fire approximately a year and a half ago, and I recognize that from an ownership side and from the city's viewpoint, not much has happened. We did secure the property, we boarded it up any opening, we fenced around it. I will acknowledge that it needs some weeds removed, which we're doing today. This is the first notice that I received with respect to it being dilapidated, it having holes in outer walls, holes in roof, premises unsanitary, rank weeds. We're here to work with the city. I have a June 7 email, which I would hope could be considered by city council, in which our insurance company has actually reopened their investigation and has assigned a building consultant. I have spoken to Chris Smith, the chief building inspector, who's willing to meet us out there with our contractor. I've got a number of bids and plans of what we would like to do with the property. My issue is I need a little more time in order to convince the insurance company to pay the claim that we believe they need to pay. By tearing this down, we're going to lose the evidence associated with it. The second thing that we got that we would like to be able to preserve here is, there is a historic nature to the brick portion of this. We have sought historical credits earlier, and they told us that the removal of the metal structure, which I'm happy to donate to HP too, if we'd like to do that, the removal of the metal structure would then let us be, we would then be able to apply for those historical credits. So the preservation of that brick building... So, the preservation of that brick building is something that we would like to see done. I don't believe the roof was actually affected there. My contractors told me that's a simple fix as far as securing that. So, we're willing to work with the city to make this, obviously, more appeasing and then on, you know, we don't want this to be any kind of danger to the city. So, while it was in use is when we had somebody break into the building and start the fire. Since it hasn't, I'm not aware of anybody that's been in the property. We don't get the beer cans, the trash, anything like that now that we fenced it off. So, you have my commitment that we'll keep the property tidy. And then, as I work with the building inspector, we can come to a plan to make sure that it's safe. And hopefully, we have some development to it and a plan in the next 30 to 60 days.
Question would be?
I was going to ask him to defer.
How long do you need to meet with the insurance adjusters, the contractors, get bids? What's a reasonable period of time?
So, again, I've got a June 7 email from the contractor who assigned me the senior building consultant who's from Shreveport, Louisiana. I've talked to him three times now. I told him, once I got this notice, I was out of town, so I only received the notice June 10th.
Would like the, our first meeting in August be enough time for you?
I think it would. He understands the need for us to get moving on this.
Yeah. I'd make a motion to defer this to our first meeting in August.
Okay, what date is that, Amy? August, oh, I guess it would be August 13th.
Thank you all very much.
Well, we got to.
We got to vote on it.
I understand.
Okay, so we have a motion upcoming here to defer item 11N1B to August 13th. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. We also have signed up on the side of Michael Washington. Not in the chamber. All right, then we'll advance to the resolution found at 11N2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated, save for the one previously deferred. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 1101 is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So, we will advance to the resolution found at O2, declaring that the structures are unsecured. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11P1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So, we will advance to the resolution found at P2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned.
Your Honor, excuse, Your Honor, 2400 North Robinson. We'll need to defer that to go along with the deferral for.
Oh, good catch. Okay, so let's back up and defer that item. P2, P, I'm sorry, P1B. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're back on P2. The resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned, except for those previously struck or deferred. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Peck, have you voted? Passes unanimously. Okay, now we are at item Q. This is, Q1 is the second public hearing regarding fire sales tax appropriations. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
We have not, so we'll advance to Q2. This is the resolution regarding appropriations for the Fire Department for fiscal year 2024-25. We already had a presentation on this at our last meeting. If there are no comments or questions, we could consider the resolution. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11R1 is the second public hearing regarding the police sales tax appropriations. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
And so, we'll advance to the resolution found at R2, regarding the appropriations for the Police Department for fiscal year 2024-25. We had a presentation on this at our last meeting. If there's no other comments or questions, we could consider the resolution. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes seven to one. And item 11S1 and 2 are related. S1 is an amendment regarding BikeWalk OKC, and S2 is a resolution adopting an update to BikeWalk OKC. I don't know if we need any further discussion about it. If there's.
It was everything that we agreed to in the last meeting.
Okay.
All right, just question. I heard what you just said. But I just want to make sure, so the things that I had mentioned are in the corrected.
It should be in the amended version.
Okay. I just wanted to find the page if I can. Do I, do we know which? Well, it's in here too. I was just curious which page.
The new, Jeff, other planning director, I think the new information was on page 133.
Thank you. Sorry, I should have been prepared for that, but it's okay. All right, okay. Thank you very much. And as we continue to go through this, I just, I know y'all are going to get tired of hearing me talk about Lottie and these bike lanes. And I'm sorry, because your mouth just went, "Oh." So, I'm sorry you got to hear it, because I keep hearing it myself. I don't know what we need to do, but I just feel like someone was concerned yesterday and let me know that someone almost got hit again. Because, again, the way this has changed dramatically for this part of our community in this street, people are not understanding of what is going on, if that makes sense. You know, you can put signs out all day, but if, you know, a lot of times, people are used to what they're used to, those streets and infrastructure and whatever the case may have been, existence, existing for so long. So, I'm hoping that we can look at, I don't know if it needs to be biweekly, you know, what we can do now. And I'm sorry to put this burden on you, but I really want to get this right with our community and our residents. And right now, it's a lot more complaining than it is accepting. And I know, I know the benefit of what we're working to do, but I want us, if you can help me figure this out, how do we ensure that our community and our residents and our neighbors understand the benefit of what this is working to do as well? And when I explain to folks that people are getting hit or have been hit on Lottie, you know, there's always the, "Well, they're really going to get hit now." So, it's trying to combat those conversations, but I don't know how to do it. So, please, I beg you today, please help me.
Yes, absolutely. We, and it is concerning, of course, to hear that there have been near accidents. And, you know, if we can get details about those, or please pass along those, and we can see, you know, if it's an intersection or any kind of design issue that we can get fixed, or if it's, if it's a, just a kind of a getting used to it or a misunderstanding of what's going on, then, you know, more outreach may be needed. I know we've, that Public Works has installed additional delineators. I know they've installed signage, as you mentioned. I think there are additional delineators on their way. But, you know, maybe we need to do additional outreach in terms of mailers or something of that, of that sort. So, I'll get with Debbie Miller, and we'll see what we can do to address that. But again, yeah, please do send those along, because, as you know, and safety is always a top concern, and we're in the middle of our Vision Zero Plan. And we want to make sure that we're doing everything, everything we can to make sure that cyclists are protected there, and that drivers know what's going on, and that it's, that it's more intuitive.
Thank you. And maybe this can be a way to get our community involved in the Vision Zero Plan, more of them involved in this Vision Zero Plan, to understand, as a city, what we are doing and working to create as far as protection for our residents all over the city, and not just in one area. Because people are saying, "Why is that just happening here?" When it's like, "No, it's happening all over the city. You're just seeing it first." So, I would appreciate, again, any assistance with that. And if there's a way for us to maybe intentionally just have a focus meeting in our community about it, I'm happy to use my platform to help us do that, too. Thank you. Otherwise, I would like to accept the amendment.
Okay. So, let's move S1 first. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're on S2, as amended, the resolution adopting the update to BikeWalk OKC. We could take a motion on that as well. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're at item T. This is a resolution adopting the City of Oklahoma City Emergency Operations Plan. We do have a presentation on that.
Yes, Captain Audra George will give us the overview of the plan and the changes that we have in this one.
Good morning. So, I am presenting the city's emergency operations plan today. As you know, the plan has to be updated and approved by council annually. This is, the plan itself is a collaborative effort for, by all of our city departments. The emergency operations plan is the framework through which the City of Oklahoma City prepares for, prevents, protects, mitigates, responds to, and recovers from the impacts of major emergencies that could affect the health and safety of our residents. This year, there are no major changes to our emergency operations plan, but this has allowed us to focus on our new website, the SPEAR website, which is the Special Protection Events and Emergency Response website. In this website, you'll find information about emergency management and special events. On the emergency management page, you will find information about mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. And at the bottom of the page, you will find some of the answers to some of the most frequently asked questions that our office receives on the daily. Again, so it talks about mitigation. Under mitigation, you will see we now have our city's hazard mitigation plan. We are going to be working on making this into a story map this year. I think once we, you kind of see what we're going for, and I can go ahead and show you a story map in the, our emergency operations plan. So, the emergency operations plan can be kind of cumbersome to read. It's a pretty large document. And so, we're really working on making it a little bit more interactive. And so, you'll see, as we're going through, it'll kind of highlight our city's diversity. We are a growing city, and so, we want to highlight that. In addition, you will see some of the hazards that impact our city. Again, these are interactive maps. And so, if you are curious about the tornadoes that have hit our city, it'll give you information on those. In addition, you will find information about warnings. We also have the map of all of our outdoor warning sirens on the site as well. So, we also created a link that will allow our residents to report damage immediately. This, it's, we worked with a collaboration with the state. So, this is actually the state's reporting tool, but it's linked to our city. So, any information that a resident enters will also be shared with us directly. We are also working on a current situation dashboard that will kind of give you a snapshot of the city on the daily. There's a lot of information. People are always curious about weather. So, we've got a lot of information on there for us, for our residents. So, this website is still under construction. We are working to provide a lot of information to our residents. So, this is hopefully the site that they can go to to get a lot of information. Are there any questions?
I really appreciate Audra and her leadership, and what they're trying to do as a team to make this more useful and manageable, both within the organization, because there's so many agencies that get involved in these emergency management situations, and then also for the community. So, I really appreciate the leadership and what you're doing on this.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, there's no comments or questions. We can consider the resolution. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you again, Captain George and your team. All right, U1 is a resolution authorizing municipal council to confess judgment in Adams, in Adams v. City of OKC and the Water Utilities Trust. Staff has not requested executive session. We could take a motion on this. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11V1 is a joint resolution with Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, authorizing the firm Colin Zorn and Wagner to represent Tyler Arney and Sean Lindsay in the case of Cooks v. City of OKC Police Department. Staff has not requested executive session. We could take a motion on this. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes seven to one. And then, item W, staff is requesting that we strike this item, that they're not ready for it today. But because we didn't do that earlier in the meeting, we will need to take a vote to strike the item. So, if we could take a motion, this is a motion to strike item 11W. Motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11X is an executive session to receive communications from our attorneys concerning Scott as next of kin to Derek Scott versus City of OKC, Jared Tipton, Ashley Copeland, and Jennifer Titus. We could take a motion now to go into executive session, and then we'll handle that at the end of our other business. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. As stated, we'll do that later. Okay, this brings us to item Y1, claims recommended for approval. There are two. Executive session is not requested by staff. We could take these with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That concludes our votes for the day. Now, we'll go on to item 12, comments from council. Word one.
None today, sir. Thank you.
Word three.
Yes, sir. Just want to speak out a reminder for the Swisher Park Community Meeting this evening. It is being held at Mustang North Middle School, the 10901 Southwest 15th Street, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., while it is Election Day in Oklahoma, and in Oklahoma City. We hope that you'll come out either after work, when you finish voting, and come by and tell us all your ideas for what Swisher Park's vision and amenities would include. So, that's all I've got for today. Thanks.
Thank you. Word four? Word five? Word six? Word seven?
Thank you. I just want to say a couple things. One, we, as we go through this week tomorrow, we observe Juneteenth for our city. I know there were some events that happened this past weekend, and they were well-attended, especially our 5K that happened on Northeast 23rd Street. The streets were packed with people enjoying the scenery. And shout out to our residents who are getting more engaged every year to cheer on our runners and walkers and participants that are a part of the 5K. I know, even with Scissor Tail, there were quite a few different things going on within our community and our city. So, it was a bustling weekend for events. And I just want us to understand the importance of Juneteenth. I know I mention it every year, but the importance of Juneteenth, not only for Texas, as Texas is. is acknowledged as the last free state. The history continues to Oklahoma with the Battle of Honey Spring with the following year. So just keep, keep that in mind. I know tomorrow, I'm very grateful for our Public Works Department to help ensure that we honor Juneteenth. The Scissor Tail Bridge will be lit red, white, and blue. And for those who wonder why red, white, and blue, the Juneteenth flag is red, white, and blue. And there are meanings for this. There's a star, the horizon, there's a red portion, a, a blue portion that's under that, and a star that sits in the middle of both that commemorates what took place as far as the enslaved people for America. And, and again, I, for us as Oklahoma to have a piece of this history, I think is very important for us to acknowledge and to recognize. Lastly, I just want to say, make sure you get out and vote. The polls are open until 7:00. I can't tell you who to vote for, but make sure you do get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Word eight?
Thanks, ma'am. There's a great article in the Journal Record this morning about the Oklahoma City Zoo unveiling a new master plan. It's probably the most ambitious plan they've ever put together in their 122-year history. I always try to remind people that we have one of the greatest zoos in the world. This year, we will have over 1.1 million people, visitors coming to the zoo, and 2024 is looking even better. So I can't wait to see the plan, and I want to thank their, their board of directors for hard, that hard work.
All right, thank you.
May I sneak in? So first, I want to thank Councilman Stonecifer for earlier. That really meant a lot to me. And Councilman Carter mentioned something similar. So I just, that grateful for those sorts of moments. So last week, I received a phone call, a text message from my friend Jenny, asking me to give her a call because she had some very heavy news for me. And when I called her that evening, it was for her telling me that her partner and my best, one of my best friends since the year 2000, when he was at Carl Albert, Lucas Dunn, had passed away from liver failure. And that has shaken me to a level I, I, I didn't know I could experience. My father, as you all know, I've mentioned to you, passed away from alcoholism as well. And I just feel like this boogeyman has, just keeps claiming people around me. You know, the tricky thing about drinking is when, when, when it becomes addictive, and you see your family or your friend struggling with it, that if you tell them, you face them getting mad at you. If you don't tell them, they can die. And I, I, Lucas wrote for Edible. He wrote for McSweeney's. He made it into the national publication known as McSweeney's. He wrote food reviews and histories of everything. I mean, it was like Anthony Bourdain was in our city, was the way Lucas Dunn wrote. He championed the dishwashers in restaurants because he understood the significance that if you don't have a good dishwasher, a person who washes dishes, then the whole enterprise of the restaurant falls apart. And Lucas wanted to make sure in his writing that he started there, that you knew the dishwasher's name and their history and how they came to work wherever they worked in our city, often at our local restaurants in our Vietnamese community, for instance. Lucas, when I was a senior, he would have been a sophomore. And I remember he got kicked out at Carl Albert. It was after Columbine. He had drawn some things. He loved to draw as much as he liked to write. And they were like, we think that kid's destined to, to hurt somebody. And it turns out that was never true. He just had this great imagination, this vivid imagination. He was one of the funniest humans I have ever met in my entire life. I'll just share this, this story. When he called me the weekend of the Paseo Arts Festival, I'd just gotten back to the neighborhood, and I spoke to him in the backyard on my phone. And he was so excited about Mad Max coming out, a new Mad Max. And I said I had tickets. And he and Jenny joined us the next day. And I am so grateful I answered that phone call because I hadn't seen him in months. We go on an annual cabin trip to celebrate our mutual best friend Austin's birthday. For 10 years, we've done that. And I hadn't seen him in months. And I'm glad I answered that call. I'm even more glad that I got to sit beside him and see truly a level of giddiness that I wish I could find the right words. He was just tickled pink watching those action sequences unfold. They were so impressive, and he knew it. He understood it. He's one of the, Lucas Dunn was one of the toughest critics you'll ever know when it kind of came to music, when it came to literature. He could talk to you about James Joyce. He could talk to you about Friday the 13th. He was my horror friend. He was my funny friend. People like Lucas and me weren't supposed to be on the city council. We weren't, we're not lawyers. We don't own businesses. We, 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 we were from Midwest City. And we, he just wanted a more walkable city and a more bikeable city. And he advocated it at MAPS, forced public hearing. And, and, and I, I wish I had had a chance to finish Uptown 23rd Streetscape so he could have seen what Joe Beth and I were building for him. It's not right. No parent should have to bury their child. I ran for Lucas. I, I ran for my students. I, I, I ran because I know what the city is capable of. And when you all hear me give my critiques about our housing prices or the pedestrian fatalities or the bike concerns I have, it's because I care so much about our city and because I know what we're capable of. MAPS 3 began this meeting, but MAPS 4 is ahead of us. Vision Zero is ahead of us. And there are other Lucas Duns out there, other weirdos. He'd love that phrase. Other weirdos who just need our love and support. And I am so grateful that I had him in my life. I'm scared of some uncomfortable conversations I think I'm going to have to have with some friends who I worry about their drinking too. I can't keep losing people to that monster. Lucas was a gift. He was a gem. He was, in some ways, the best of us. And I am honored to have known Lucas Dunn. I'm proud of his work. And even if he had not written a single national publication, I would have loved him from the bottom of my heart. You all will never know what it is like to have someone who is straight hug you and embrace you and tell you you're okay. My heart is broken. And now I have to be as strong as I can for my friends because that hole that's there will never go away. But I know that we all have to live on, and live on we will. And it is incumbent upon us to be there for each other, for community. So to Lucas and Jenny and to the ESMB. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes comments from council. We're now at Citizens to Be Heard, and we have Michael Washington.
Wonderful reminder, 100 Park Place, Midwest City, Oklahoma. Thank you. Very touching story there, Brother James Cooper. Thank you so much for that. Now, I don't want to hold you long. It's not anything regarding what y'all have done or didn't do. But I see the city, actually County Commissioner of Oklahoma County, it's still been upon, quiet, still been upon trying to build this new jail site in Dale City. They went over the recommendation of, actually the decision of you people to disapprove of it. So now they're going to use some so-called executive authority or what have you to claim the site anyway? What was the mere reason of coming before you in the first place if you could have done that in the first place? We knew we were going to do it. So we've just gone through the, for lack of a better word, changes, process. I don't know what step after they decide this, but some citizens have asked me to come out today. And you know, Michael, he's going to do it. I think what we're going to have to do then is file a civil rights lawsuit. Again, the mayor is for it, so I can speak this. Those council members and, and residents of that area are all for it. And I've been asked to get involved. You want to know why? Because Michael makes those kind of changes. Gung ho. Sometime my approach and delivery isn't as desired by many. But there are times when you have to modify what you do so that everybody can be a part of the equation. Isn't that wonderful? They should not have to be exposed to this. So city council commissioners, I'll be terrible to talk to you next, in a much more harsher tone. Not disrespectfully, but asking you, are you using your power to overstep the bounds and decisions and desires of those who put you in the power in the first place? Oh, Catherine Blumer. No, I'm coming. 39 seconds. Y'all know I'm long-winded. But I just want to say, I don't often do this. Thank you for making the decision that you reached.
30 seconds.
In turning that jail site down. There are much more important things that we can be dealing with. And there are plenty of millions of dollars they can use to place it anywhere else but in this neighborhood. So what are they trying to do then? Trying to get rid of vacancy and homelessness that this city no longer wants, this part of Oklahoma City. Thank y'all very much. And it's been a while, but I am back. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Citizens to Be Heard. We now have an executive session previously voted on, and we'll return after that. We now have an executive session previously voted on, and we'll return after that.